Okay. We've been, uh, we've been, um, give a minute. Are we, are we, are we, she's, uh, saying?
He's gonna stay where he is, he's gonna.
Hey Liz. Just so you know, I'm in this, I'm sending you, um, the presentation that's gonna be happening tonight. Cause you won't be able to see it from where you are. Okay?
You're sending it to me right now?
Yeah, I'll send it to you right now.
Are you sent? Okay.
It's sent.
Thank you.
Okay. You got that change in there?
Mayor.
All right. Okay.
Mayor, it's seven o'clock.
Yep. Greetings, everyone. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the South Windsor Town Council to order for Monday, July 19th at 7:00 PM. We'll start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, can we have the roll call? Ms. Reed, Clerk of the Council?
Counselor King.
Here.
Counselor Leidecker. Counselor Lopez. Counselor Evans.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Pendleton.
Present.
Mayor Paterna.
Here.
Counselor Manili.
Here.
Counselor Snyder.
Here.
Counselor Kowalski.
Here.
All right, thank you, Ms. Reed. We'll go on to the mayor's remarks. And I just want to start this evening with, uh, a moment of silence for two town employees. One Benjamin Lovett, Officer Lovett, the South Windsor Police Department, and a town staff member at the library, Joe Pava, who both passed away this week. So a moment of silence. Thank you. We send our regards and condolences to both families and also to the South Windsor family that they both belong to in terms of our town staffs. Items five, our adoption of the agenda, Counselor Kowalski.
Move the adoption of the agenda.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made and seconded, any additions or changes to the agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll go on to voting, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, agenda is adopted, on to number six, our report from the town manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, tonight, this is probably the first time in at least a year that I'm reporting to you that we have no changes in any of our COVID-19 numbers, uh, from the last time that I reported to you a couple of weeks ago. Um, in terms of Storm Elsa and the previous two weather events, uh, I think we can all agree that the two thunderstorms that we had, the, the couple of days before Storm Elsa were significantly worse. Um, over that, I believe, four day period, we had close to 200 trouble spots within the community, which were locations with power lines down, trees involved, roads blocked, flooding, um, and multiple other issues. Uh, I would like to recognize our Public Works Department, our Fire Department, our Police Department, and, uh, our Water Pollution Control Staff for the great work that they did in managing, uh, their way through all those storms. Uh, specifically, Mr. Stetson, this was his first, uh, foray at the helm and, uh, after just a couple of days, he did a great job. So, um, just to kind of give everybody an idea of what we ended up with, uh, towards the end of, uh, Storm Elsa, on a regular day, uh, one of the pump stations in town, they gave me some numbers, uh, that pump station usually passes about a million gallons a day, on a normal day. Uh, the day of Storm Elsa, we actually passed four million gallons, uh, through that pump station, just to kind of give you an idea of the amount of water. Uh, just so everybody kind of understands the process and, uh, the declaration of emergency that we did issue, because I think it raised some questions and some people had, uh, kind of thought that because we did that declaration, that they would be entitled to some money or something of that nature. Uh, so we did issue a declaration of emergency, uh, before Storm Elsa. Really, the purpose of that was because of the, the amount of damage and debris that we had as a result of the previous two storms, looking at the significant rainfall coming from, uh, Storm Elsa and the possibility that we could have flooding. Um, we issued that declaration, uh, in order to kind of, uh, smooth the road, for lack of a better term, uh, towards getting some permits for debris management and our debris management site. Additionally, it would also block our, our location in line for if the, uh, federal government were to identify this as a federal emergency, we could then potentially get in line for funding. What that funding means is that the town would get reimbursed for its costs for managing that storm. Uh, it wouldn't be like the ARPA funds or anything else, it would be funds that come back to the town for reimbursement. Uh, just so everybody's aware, uh, we're still in the process of trying to get reimbursed for Storm Isaiis, which was over, almost a year ago. So it's not like we go and we issue a declaration of emergency and all of a sudden, a big check shows up at the door and we have money to use. Um, so that, that's kind of the process that occurs and I think that kind of, unfortunately, a number of people didn't quite understand that. So hopefully that clears it up for, for some people moving forward. Uh, additionally, uh, as all of you are aware, at this point, the town of South Windsor has identified a mosquito within our community that has tested positive for West Nile. Uh, as a result, we're trying to recommend to everybody, uh, the following six steps. Uh, minimize time spent outdoors between dusk and dawn when mosquitoes are most active. Be sure door and window screens are tight fitting and in good repair. Wear shoes, socks, long pants, and long sleeve shirts when outdoors for long periods or when mosquitoes are most active. Clothing should be light colored and made of tightly woven material that keep mosquitoes away from the skin. Uh, use mosquito netting when sleeping outdoors or in an unscreamed structure and to protect small babies when outdoors. Consider the use of mosquito repellent according to directions when it is necessary to be outdoors and eliminate standing water as much as possible on your property to reduce mosquito populations. Additionally, we do have dunks available for the public at our, uh, Health Department in town. So if anybody's interested and they have a, uh, standing body of water within their property and would, uh, like to throw some of those dunks in their property or, or in that water, they are more than welcome to come and, uh, get a few of those, uh, from our Health Department. Um, in terms of our American Recovery Act funds, uh, Scott, if you want to start up the, uh, screen there, we have a little bit of a presentation to show you guys real quick. Um, I, I don't know if Counselor Manili wants to run out of the room real quick. We just wanted to show you, we've, we're just about ready to make it public, our, um, how our plans for our ARPA funds and how they're going to be spent. Uh, we did put a webpage together so that way, uh, the public is able to review that and take a look at it as well. So. I'll move on to just the next item so that we could let that warm up. Uh, lastly, uh, in your packet, I did include a report on tran, on the transparency, like was requested from the council previously. Uh, if you look through that report, we identified 10 items from the previous resolution that was passed by the council. Uh, out of those 10 items, everything is either ongoing or complete, except for one item that's in progress, which is number six, related to town billboards, which are currently in the process of being implemented. And then, uh, we had two items that were not started, which were related to, uh, appointments to boards and, uh, the oper, and, uh, trying to get the word out for opportunities for individuals, and for unaffiliated voters to get involved. Uh, both of those items seem to fall within kind of council requirement, or council world rather than the town staff world, so. So this is the webpage that we put together, this is using the same format that we used for our town website, or for our town budget last year. Um, it's through ClearGov. Uh, this is kind of a big overview of what the ARPA funds are, what, how it got approved, and, uh, how much the town of South Windsor is getting. Now, if you go to that very bottom link and you click there, it will open up all the projects for the town that we have, that town staff have identified and passed through our vetting process to ensure that they meet the requirements of the actual ARPA funds. So you could run all the way through all those, uh, the very last two, if you want to just scroll down to those, Scott. Um, the WPCA projects and contingency, those are in the process of still being approved, but we wanted to leave those out. And then we did want to include a small contingency, just in the event that we do have some changes in costs associated with some materials and things, because we do know it's a bit of a volatile market for construction. Um, if you want to scroll up to one of the projects, Scott, and maybe pick one, we can kind of show everybody all the information inside there. So basically, this is a sidewalk project to, uh, get some connectivity to some of our town parks. That way, because we saw through COVID, uh, there was a lot of use of our town parks and we've thought if we had some additional sidewalks, people, people, more people would get outside, more people would use our parks and it would offer, offer more social opportunities that are safe, uh, during COVID-19, uh, scenarios. So this kind of gives you an overview of what we're looking at, it gives you the locations of where the sidewalk, the additional sidewalks would be put in, gives you the projected budget of what that's going to be. Um, if there's any attachments that they would have. Just the form that they filled out, okay? Yep. And then we have kind of a time, uh, a little line here that'll show you as it's, uh, moving through its process to actually towards completion. So that way, anybody in the public will be able to see where that project is and, and its process. So right now, it's currently in its proposed phase, we just approved them last week, so, uh, we're loading everything in right now. But this should provide anybody in the public, as well as anybody in the council, with up-to-date information related to those projects as we move forward. And you'll be able to access this through the town's, uh, webpage, as well as a projected timeline. And I believe that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I could take questions if you want.
Mr. Mayor, if that's okay, while, while it's up, okay, thank you. Um, Mike, can you just give us a brief rundown, like, you know, a sentence or two on each one of these? So we can do that publicly, so everybody can hear, like, what's HS, benefit assistance, things like that?
Yeah, so, um, we'll start right at the top, the teen center outdoor program space. Um, really, we identified that while at the community center, there's an outdoor programming space for the seniors, there's not one center that's there. So, uh, we were trying to make an outdoor space, there'll be a nice, uh, patio with pavers and, uh, area where they can be outside together in, in a safer manner. So that's that project. The Human Services Benefit Assistance is going to be rental assistance, um, for people who are, were impacted financially through, uh, throughout COVID. Uh, that'll, uh, provide assistance to people in the event that they are having, uh, challenges still making their rent, uh, after the impacts associated with, uh, the pandemic. Um, mental health supports for youth adults and senior, and senior citizens, those are some of our additional social workers, uh, as well as the Youth Behavior Counselor, that's the one that's going to be at the summer camp. The Aquatics Water Program, Safety Program, that's a, a program that's going to hopefully get implemented sometime in August. Uh, I think we talked about that, related to the swimming challenges that we've seen at the, at the pool recently. Um, our exercise trail at Nevers Park got a lot of use throughout the pandemic and it really needs some love, care, and attention, so we're hoping that we can use some funds to, uh, get that back on, uh, on board. Uh, that's the sidewalk project that we just talked about. Uh, we're also talking about putting some fiber optic lines to get some better internet access to, uh, the new Pleasant Valley School, as well as the old Orchard Hill School. Uh, as well as fiber optic line to our sewer treatment plant and the Board of Education Administrative Building. Uh, all these are locations that currently don't have fiber optic, uh, internet, so, uh, hopefully that'll help move the needle on their speeds and access to things on the internet. Um, also, we're looking at doing some renovations to the Public Works and Clerk's offices within the Town Hall building here, so that way, they're made, uh, COVID safe. We're also talking about doing HVAC upgrades to Fire Headquarters and the Town Hall, so that way, uh, those are going to be, uh, safer for, uh, in the event of another pandemic. Uh, we're also talking about doing Town Hall window replacements, uh, to again, make the building safer for, uh, in the event of a pandemic. And then lastly, the WPCA projects that are currently under review. Uh, if I remember correctly, they provided us with a list of almost $20 million worth of projects. Um, so I think we're providing them back around three or four million dollars, so, um, they should, they're going to review that and see what, what we can get done. But I think we've got, uh, I think we've spread the money out pretty well in terms of trying to be able to help as many people as possible within the community. And that was really our goal, was to try to get, get in, um, get as many people impacted as possible in a positive way.
Counselor Evans.
Thank you, I was just curious with the sidewalks at Pleasant Valley and Ellington. Having dropped my kids off throughout the year to Pleasant Valley Elementary School, there was a number of families walking along Ellington Road, um, which is a very busy road and it would be really nice to have those sidewalks, um, carry down through the neighborhoods where families would be able to walk to school on a daily basis. So I'm curious where exactly those sidewalks will be for the Pleasant Valley Ellington.
So this is Pleasant Valley Road to get people to parks, not, not to the school?
Okay, have we, I know when the new school is built, there will be sidewalks in front of there. Will that, will those sidewalks connect down to Pleasant Valley or other areas?
Without having the site plan in front of me, I don't remember specifically.
Okay, because there was the church there was.
Yeah.
Okay, if we could.
Yeah, part of the problem again with the sidewalks, um, and all the ARPA funds is it has to be directly connected to mitigating impacts from COVID. So the idea with the sidewalks was people were, in the middle of the pandemic, it's the, the safest social activity is to be outside. So we're trying to drive as many people outside and doing things outside as possible. So we're trying to drive as many people outside and doing things outside as possible. If you remember during the pandemic, a lot of kids went to school at home, so.
I think a lot of families also opted to walk more rather than use buses, so.
Correct.
It does kind of tie in. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I just ask for a quick.
Thank you, Counselor Evans.
Quick point of clarification, I'm sorry. Scott, where on the South Windsor website do we see this? Can you just run through that from the beginning again, please? Because I'm not seeing it.
I don't believe it's up public yet. We wanted to provide it to you guys first.
Okay, thanks.
There you go.
Yeah, this is just for you tonight. We are going to push it out on social media with everybody's blessing tomorrow. All right, thank you, Counselor Snyder. Any other questions for Town Manager or Mr. Roberts?
I think the deputy mayor.
Yes, Deputy Mayor Pendleton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Maniscalco, with the sidewalks on Pleasant Valley Road going to the park you're speaking about going down to VMP?
I believe that, I believe that's the location.
And we, we did pass the referendum for the funding for the roads of Pleasant Valley and Buckland, correct?
Correct.
So are the, is the road going to be done in conjunction, or the sidewalks going to be done in conjunction with the road repairs on Pleasant Valley?
We would try to. I can't 100% promise that, because the, the road design does take a bit longer. And I'm not sure what, off the top of my head, I'm not sure the total timeline for the Pleasant Valley Road construction. But we do have till 2023, I believe it was, to spend all the ARPA funds. So we're on a tighter timeline for the ARPA funds.
That, that's what my point being is, I know we're on a timeline for this money, and, and hopefully we can get the Pleasant Valley Road done prior to putting in sidewalks. I would hate to see sidewalks go in and then be affected by the road having to be repaired.
Yeah, we certainly wouldn't do that.
Okay.
We wouldn't want that to happen.
Okay. And would these sidewalks go up to the condominium developments?
Scott, could you click on that, and maybe it shows?
I didn't see exactly the length of the sidewalks, I'm sorry.
See if we go down to their application, maybe? I don't know if it has it in there. Yeah, I don't remember if there was. Maybe? It's Dirt Hill. No, that's not the right one. Keep going. Yeah, so it's from. Looks like it's from, yeah, from Long Hill to, to VMP. Looks like the stretch.
Okay.
It's a little tough in black and white, but.
I'm not sure that's going to impact a whole lot of homes. There's only a few side streets there, three actually, that have some houses on them, not a whole lot. That's why I was wondering if it would be going up to the condo developments for folks to travel from there down to VMP. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you, Deputy Mayor Pendleton. Any other questions for the Town Manager or Mr. Roberts on this project? All right, hearing none, thank you very much, Mr. Roberts. Mr. Maniscalco, anything else?
That's it?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Let Counselor Neely know that she can return? All right, thank you. We'll go on to item seven, public input. Let me just read our statement before we begin. When recognized, speakers shall approach the lectern, or in this case, in some cases, reading emails, give their name and address, avoid personalities or impugning of improper motive to any person at this meeting. The speaker shall limit their speaking time to five minutes. This limit may not be exceeded, except when invoked by any member of the council with the consent of a majority of the counselors present. Town council members will not respond to any public comments or questions during public input. All right, is there anyone from the public who would like to speak? Anyone from the public? Mrs. Wagner?
Am I on? Okay. My name is Karen Wagner, 181 Tumblebrook Drive.
Karen, you got to lean towards the microphone a little bit, yes, so we can hear your recording.
Here we go. Does that, is that better?
Yes.
Let's try this again.
Yes.
I'm Karen Wagner, 181 Tumblebrook Drive. This is not actually the reason I came tonight, but I understand there is a proposal under discussion for an arts commission, and I would like to add my support to this idea. I was a member of the Human Relations Commission several years ago, and we talked about a lot of ideas for art projects in town. And the one thing that we managed to pull off was a park bench painted in a kind of a patriotic theme that was installed at the Main Street Post Office, which, by the way, is the third oldest post office in the country. So a patriotic theme, it's very appropriate for that. We had hoped to get funded for more of those kinds of park benches throughout the town, but money ran out and lots of things changed, so that never happened. However, for that bench, we held a competitive contest for painting of the bench among local artists. We favored artists in town, and we got help from high school students in the art department. And it was our hope that we would involve a lot more high school students. And I can see this happening if we have an arts commission, because there's a lot of things that the art department of the high school is willing to do in concert with the town to just promote art. So I would like to add my support to this proposal. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else from the public who'd like to speak tonight? Going once, going twice. All right, we do have an email letter I'd like to read to you. And Ms. Reed, I forgot to say before, but you'll keep time for any public input? Okay. This is from Anthony J. Dennis. I currently reside at 47 Breezy Hill Road, and wish these comments to be read and entered into the record as part of the public input portion of the Town Council July 19th meeting. I respectfully but strenuously oppose certain of the proposed revisions to the Town Council rules and procedures to be discussed tonight under agenda item 12D entitled Unfinished Business. Specifically, I urge the council not to place additional limits and restrictions on the ability of citizens to exercise their First Amendment rights to address the council in the public input or public comments portion of Town Council meetings. Pages seven and eight of the Red Line Draft of the Town Council Rules and Procedures, which was shared at the last council meeting and which is amended to, or appended to the agenda of July 19th, clearly shows that the council is contemplating further restrictions on the ability of residents to provide comments at both in-person and virtual meetings. The council already has reasonable rules in place governing public input, which have served the town and council well enough over the years. I believe that certain important topics of debate will arise again this fall and throughout next year, including but not limited to the attempted implementation of equity, parentheses, not equality, social justice, parentheses, which often comes at the expense of individual justice, and critical race theory in our schools, throughout the town government and across our town generally, which make it imperative that citizens have the right to speak and not have their First Amendment rights further restricted and abridged by rules and procedures changed and implemented by the council. It is an inopportune time, to say the least, to further free speech restrictions at council meetings in advance of what promises to be a lively debate on these and other topics. The public input portion of the council meetings is a crucial part of the functioning democracy and is doubly important at this time of cultural and political discussion and debate. To further limit, restrict, and abridge citizens' right to speak at the podium, provided for that purpose at council meetings, would be a grave injustice and mistake. This is not the time to cap, curtail, or limit discussion, expression, or debate. I perceive absolutely no compelling governmental interest or reason why these additional restrictions on free speech and the ability of residents to publicly comment should be implemented at this time. In a public forum such as a Town Council meeting, citizens have a right to speak and express their views publicly to council members. These free speech rights are grounded in both our state and federal constitutions and other founding documents, are the essence of our representative democracy. They can be regulated by the government only to a certain, limited extent, and I believe you have already previously done so. There is no compelling governmental reason for these additional proposed speech restrictions, nor can they possibly outweigh the First Amendment rights of citizens to speak in this kind of designated public forum. I believe that for reasons of public policy and the public interest, that these particular language revisions should also be promptly abandoned. To date, you have publicly stated no reason other than the convenience of Town Council members and certain town staff for the Town Council to suddenly introduce a rule limiting all public input at in-person meetings to a total of 30 minutes, and all public input at virtual meetings to a total of 50 minutes, and reduce speaking times to three minutes. At your last meeting, Counselor Neely asked about the reasons for these new restrictions on public input, and essentially was told that it took a long time to read comments into the record, and that basically having a longer public input period at the in-person and virtual meetings was inconvenient. Please view the recording of your last meeting, in which these proposed Red Line changes were raised and discussed by Counselor Neely and others. These particular rule changes represent quite a departure from past practice and quite an abrupt change in governing philosophy, from no time limits to a strict 30-minute and 50-minute cap in total public input time. These changes beg the question, what kind of speech do you wish to limit, cap, or exclude going forward? Are you anticipating a flood of speakers in the near future on any particular subject who you wish to muzzle, shut down, or avoid? Why these proposed changes at these, at this particular time? There must be a motivating factor, other than the council wishes to wrap up meetings early or on time, instead of hearing from residents for a longer period of time, or that reading public input into the record is an inconvenience and takes too long. As elected officials who voluntarily chose to run for office, don't you have more than 30 minutes or 50 minutes to spare so you can hear the perspectives of, and concerns of town residents? I believe the public input extends the duration of the meetings, but you choose, you chose to run for office and were not forced to do so. If a subject or topic is of sufficient concern that it actually motivates enough town residents to come to a meeting to speak in person or to attend and speak virtually, wouldn't you want to hear from them, even if the 30-minute or 50-minute mark found in the proposed revisions have already been exceeded? Wouldn't you want to encourage, rather than discourage, more citizen participation?
You're done.
That's the five minutes, okay. So we've reached the five-minute time limit. I appreciate the comments, and every council member has received a copy of this email. So we all have the facts as presented by Mr. Dennis, so thank you. Any other public input? All right, we'll go on to item eight, adoption of the minutes of previous meetings, Counselor Snyder.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item eight, adoption of minutes of previous meetings. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby approves the minutes of the following Town Council meeting, regular meeting minutes of July 6th, 2021. Second.
Second.
All right, the motion to approve the minutes been made and seconded. Any changes, additions, corrections to the minutes? If not, we'll go on to voting. All those in favor, aye? Aye? Any opposed? Nay? Any abstentions? All right, thank you. Item nine, we have communications from liaisons, officers, and boards directly responsible to the council. And I think we do have a report from the Mass Transit Committee tonight. Mrs. Wagner?
Is this still on? Okay.
Yes.
My name is Karen Wagner. I am the Chair of the Mass Transit and Highway Advisory Commission, and I'm here to report on the commission's progress in creating more opportunities for public transit in South Windsor. For several years, the commission has been working on the concept of, and, a town bus that would reach underserved neighborhoods, which is almost all of the town. We recently filed a grant with the U.S. Department of Transportation for $135,000 to pay for a survey and a design and planning study for this service. The professional design study would recommend the optimal routes and hopefully do kind of the first stage of reaching into underserved neighborhoods, and also provide better service to the businesses in town. We have a lot of plazas now that do not have bus stops anywhere near them. And it would also recommend support services and talk about the cost for those. It would also pay for a professional townwide survey of residents and businesses to determine the interest in actually using a public transit system. I've given you a description of our proposal, which you should have in front of you, so that you can read that at your leisure. This is what we submitted to the DOT about two weeks ago. And you also have these maps of various cohorts in town. We broke down the town population by different groups, such as the number of carless households in the town, the number of households with seniors, the number of households with residents under the age of 18, the kind of households that might benefit from public transport more than others. But this is really for the whole town. We have done our own limited survey. In fact, we've done several, and we've reached out to people like members of the Chamber of Commerce and the senior citizens and other people who use the community center, as well as teens from some of the programs, outreach programs that we've done. But these surveys are certainly not scientific. And while the response was great, it basically showed that 50% of the people who responded to the survey would be interested in using public transportation if they could get it. But it's not a scientific survey, and it probably doesn't represent very many people in town, because people who want to use public transportation are most likely to respond to the survey if it's just an anecdotal type survey. If we get this grant, we can move forward with the planning and put ourselves in a very favorable position to apply for other grants and other means of revenue that would actually establish this bus system in town. We would need your approval to accept this planning grant before we can take it. Anybody have any questions?
Yes, Counselor King.
This is excellent, thank you, Mrs. Wagner. So two questions. Number one is, this type of mass transit, one that's almost like for colleges in the sense that the town pays for it, and it's free for all of its residents, and it's applied maybe to their taxes or what have you? Or, and this would be probably part of the second question, is there a cost for it, for each resident, whatever that might be?
Under the proposals that we have developed so far, we would expect a small fare to be charged. We would expect the town to pay nothing. We've always gone forward with this proposal with the idea that the town would not be responsible for paying for it. Among the revenues we would have would be advertising on the bus from local businesses, but not just local businesses. We have found in our research that even places like the casinos like to advertise on these local type of buses. So, but that's, that's only what we've been discussing among ourselves. What we really need is the design study and its recommendations to help us figure out where some of those revenues would come from. But there are definitely lots of possibilities out there that we've heard about from other communities that have services such as this.
Follow-up, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
So a follow-up of that would be, just for clarification's sake. So a follow-up of that would be, just for clarification's sake, this is not a mass transit system that would extend out beyond South Windsor. This is just from within South Windsor, correct?
It's interesting you should say that, but no, it's not. However, we have been in conversations with Manchester just very informally, and there's a very mild interest in extending it into areas of Manchester to hook up with the CT Transit system that's there and cover a couple of areas in Manchester that are gaps in that system that would also link to South Windsor. For instance, the Walgreens on Deming Road, there's not a bus system, there's not a bus stop there, but there's bus stops that are very close to there. And if we ran a local bus down, I think it's Oakland, right? And connected to that, that would open up a link to the CT Transit that would go a lot of ways. The same is true of Vernon, although we haven't talked to Vernon, but, you know, just kind of like throwing out ideas, we thought about the fact that there is a commuter parking lot in Vernon, so the Trittown Plaza would be a good place to link up with Vernon. And there are a lot of grants out there that support multi-town transit systems. So we think something like that could be a possibility, but that's way in the future if it happens at all. And of course, you know, everything changes, so it's hard to predict something like that. But we have thought about it. We have also thought about finding ways to link to the bike paths in town so that bikers could come to the bus and then get on CT Transit and go downtown or any place that CT Transit takes you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is awesome. Great forward-thinking. Good job.
Fingers crossed.
Thank you, Councilor King. Any other questions for Mrs. Wagner, Mass Transit Advisory Committee? Okay. Thank you very much for your report, and you'll keep us filled in when the grant is received, right?
I will let you know. We should know in November if we... Well, we'll be notified either way in November.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Any other reports from liaisons, meetings? Councilor Snyder?
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Can we turn that microphone off, please? Thank you. So I had gone to attended planning, another planning and zoning meeting. They've been very, very busy, and they have... The last thing they had in front of them, which was, is the Pleasant Valley, the 824 approval for Pleasant Valley School. There was some kind of... They're requiring sidewalks and different types of sidewalks and access and crossing on the roadway and things like that. And there were some questions as about whether, based on the speed on Ellington Road, Ellington Road is not a small walking, you know, neighborhood road, and on Long Hill as well, access in Long Hill. So they put some criteria and some special requirements on that the school board has come back, I think they came back, this was their second time, I believe, and they came back and there are certain things they will absolutely positively do and other things they really can't do. So the public hearing was closed, and they did not get through, finalize, and approving it, but I'm sure they expect it next week at their next meeting, which is the second meeting. And they meet on the second and the fourth Tuesdays of every month, so that would probably be next week. And at the library board, I had, they had discussed to me about not having enough funding to extend the carpeting, to cover the carpeting for the whole area. They would have to piece it out. So I did bring that information based on their request, the library board's request to the town manager, and tonight there is funding clay, and the town manager were able to find the funding and work hard to get that, identify that, so that we don't have this color carpet here and that color carpet there, and it's really all worn in one area. So, and it all needs to be done. So thank you to the town manager for that. They also received a grant for close to $20,000, and they are working on trying to spend that based on the criteria set forth by the federal government. So that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor Snyder. I attended the Open Space Task Force meeting. I just want to share with you that although they have not received a request from us for the property at 155 Griffin Road near Rice Street Park, they know that the town council is doing an appraisal of that property, and so they just shared that they were positive about that piece of property and would encourage us to continue to pursue it. So they had a very favorable response to it, even though it's not official yet, but they wanted to share that with the council. Okay. Thank you. Councilman Neely, if you don't mind, we have Chief Lindstrom here and Senator Anwar with some state statistics. Would you care to suspend the rules and move that discussion item up to now so we can continue that? We'll begin that discussion?
Okay.
Yes.
So do I have to suspend the rules?
So you should make a motion to suspend the rules.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules to move 13A to now.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor of suspending the rules and moving that discussion up to the present time? Aye. Any opposed? Nay. Okay. Thank you. Councilor Neely, why don't you begin? Councilman Neely, and then Senator Anwar and Chief Lindstrom.
Well, first I want to thank both the chief and the senator for attending today's meeting. As you all know, that there's been an awful lot of car break-ins, and it seems like the people who are breaking into the cars have kind of stepped it up a little bit and becoming a little bit more brazen, if you will. And I was just wondering, I know the law says we're not allowed to, you know, the police are not allowed to chase them or engage in any kind of, you know, driving, following them, you know, going after them by engaging in some sort of police chase or anything like that. And I think the young people or whoever doing it, they know this, and then when they finally do get, you know, if they get caught, they actually like go into the property, that steps up another, if it's more than just a car, they, you know, approach the house. I know the police have a protocol, well, you know, that's the next step, so they're allowed to go a little bit further. But, you know, in light of the events that occurred in both Glastonbury and New Britain, and I'm just worried that the people are going to start taking, you know, the law kind of in their own hands and different things like that. And I know you had some sort of plan, and I've heard about it, you know, through the grapevine, but I would like the chief or the senator to like, you know, tell us what we can do as residents besides keep our car locked, because there was one instance where a resident had their, they were unloading the groceries from their car, so their car was in their garage, and the garage door was open, and so was their car door. They took one bag of groceries from the car into the house, and they came back out, and both other two grocery bags were gone. You know, like, so like they, you know, and, you know, you can't, you can't, like, you can't expect the residents to like lock their car and then bring the groceries in, then come back out, unlock the car, take another bag of groceries, lock the, you know, and so, you know, they called me. I said, "Call the police." And so I'm just wondering if, you know, you could give us some sort of an action, like, tell us what, you know, your plan is or how you're addressing this. And then once we do, once you do arrest them, they're back out like the next day. So like, you know, I know that has to come from Hartford, and that's why I asked for the senator to come along, and maybe there can be, you know, because we're not the only town experiencing this, so if you wouldn't mind?
Sure. Thank you, and thank you for having me. I know Senator Anwar has a PowerPoint that he'd like to go through, but just real briefly before he does that, to answer your question, you're right, the problem is pervasive. It's not just South Windsor, it's across the state. And right now, there are a few things in the works, more of a regional, multi-jurisdictional initiative that I can talk about after Senator Anwar is done, but right now, I think our best bet is to educate the public as to what's happening, encourage them to, a few of the, a couple of the disturbing trends we've seen are, if you would ask me a year ago, I would say that these incidents are occurring overnight during the hours of darkness and really in the dead of night. However, one of the disturbing trends we're seeing is that these, I'll say kids just for lack of a better word, these kids are coming around during the day, and they're getting more brazen in that regard. And you hit on it, Councilor Neely, the second disturbing trend is that the scope of their activity seems to be extending beyond just a car in the driveway, and we're seeing some intrusion into garages and things like that. That brings with it confrontation from homeowners, and my fear is, and I think any police chief's fear, is that that's going to lead to tragic results, whether it's a life lost or someone gravely injured of a homeowner or of a child, you know? And when I say child, I mean, you know, most of these kids that we're seeing are sixteen, seventeen-ish, you know, some in their later teens than that. But that's kind of my quick reaction to what you bring up. I'll turn it over to Senator Anwar now, and then I have some other things I can go into a little more detail for you, if you want.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Paterna, and good evening, Deputy Mayor Pendleton, and thank you, Councilman Neely, for bringing this conversation, honorable members of the town council. I do have a small PowerPoint. I wanted to share that with you as soon as I can get this mouse to work. And if you want to come up over here, if, or you're comfortable where you are, that will be fine. So this mouse is not... Yeah. The mouse doesn't work. No, no, it'll be, it's a second screen. We just got to let the projector... Oh, okay. Just take a second. Here it comes. Looks like you've been investing in technology. Where's that mouse? Yeah, I just want to see the mouse up there. Do you see it moving yet? I don't see it. Come on, where's the mouse? Come on. Cheat. Yeah. But I don't got your mouse. Yeah, it's telling me where the mouse is. All right. You can just use the up and down arrow. Okay, perfect. Maybe it needs a new battery. Okay. Thank you so much, Scott. Again, thank you, Chief, for being here, and I just want to mention how Chief has been very helpful to help me understand this issue and then go a little bit deeper into this conversation. I think this is very critical, and I truly appreciate the town council asking for this conversation, especially Councilman Neely for your question. With respect to the car crimes, I think I look at them into three broad categories: theft from cars, that's what, one of the examples that Councilman Neely had talked about, but then theft of cars and then using the cars for other crimes. What we have seen in other parts of the state is that individuals are actually stealing the car and then using it for another violent crime. And these are interrelated and could be separate at the same time, but it's important to separate them out for a conversation, but also at the same time, look at the broader issue of theft of cars, which is something that truly is something we need to invest a little bit more time and understanding so we can do the best possible strategy going forward. This is from CT Examiner, April 2021, and this is the data courtesy of Mr. John DiCarlo. This, if you look at the graph, the graph, I wonder if I can, no, I do not have that capacity. The red graph is that of the state of Connecticut. If you look at in 1991, we had peaked in the number of motor vehicle thefts in the state of Connecticut, which was way above the entire country's average per 100,000 population. Since that time, it has been decreasing, and it has been lower than the rest of the country, but it has pretty much more or less followed the trend in the entire country. And I think if you look at 2019, there was a sharp decrease in the number of thefts in the state of Connecticut, and I will share with you some more data that will give us an insight if that was an anomaly or if that was a policy-based issue. But again, if you look at it, the entire country trend is followed by the state of Connecticut after around 1997 onwards. If you look at from 2010 on to 2019, again, the blue line that you see on the top, that is actually the U.S. rates, and then the orange, it should be red, but it's orange on our screen, it's the Connecticut rates. And then the motor vehicle thefts in the state of Connecticut decreased from 2010 to 2019 above the rate in the United States, 21% decrease as opposed to 15% decrease in the U.S. This rate dropped significantly larger percentage between 2018 and 2019. If you look at the right part of the graph, you see a significant drop in 2019 that was there. Well, in 2020, the preliminary data that was seen, because 2020 is in many respects an anomaly, but the numbers have changed quite a bit, and I think that is what we are seeing, what the council has talked about, what the mayor has spoken to me about, and the deputy mayor has spoken to me about, as well as the chief and our town manager and Councilman Neely. This is very real for us, and I'll try to explain why it is very real what we are seeing. This is, again, looking at our data from the Institute for Municipal and Regional Policy. This is for the state of Connecticut, that we have seen a significant decrease since 1985. If you look at the trends, and again, talking about 1991 was the highest numbers that we had seen, and then things have been decreasing compared to before, there's been a 77% reduction in the last 26 years. But if you look at the right side of that screen, I think that's something that we need to go a little bit more in-depth about, because we look at the absolute numbers in the state, but then we have to look at what's happened in the last two years or three years' time, and then from there on, we have an opportunity to look at the changes in the trends. This is, again, from Connecticut Examiner, April 2021. I'm looking at, this is only the thefts in the state of Connecticut, and if you look at 2019, you see a dip in 2019, which may have been an anomaly, but 2020, it went up. And in 2021, it is going to be a similar trend. It is going to be slightly higher from the sounds of it right now and the trends that we are seeing. So this is the part that is a concern to us. We don't need to wait for a five-year trend to be able to say that we are moving in the wrong direction, and that's why interventions are needed. Is this what we are seeing only in the state of Connecticut? The answer to that is no. And this is, again, from the National Insurance Crime Bureau report, that auto thefts took a dramatic leap upwards in 2020 compared to 2019. So the red part of the graph on the top is that of 2020, and the bar graph is from 2019. And then you're seeing that many of the times, we're seeing more of thefts happening during the winter months, but you're seeing an increase in 2020, and it's felt that like all parts of the government and things had shut down in many respects, some of the parts, like the economic downturn, the juvenile outreach programs, the public safety, budgetary, and resources limitations, may have contributed to a change that we had seen. Now, this is the part of the trend I think that is what we are all feeling in our towns over here. This is looking at the size of the community and the number of thefts that have increased over time. So historically, the larger towns with a population of 100,000-plus population, and we're seeing a lot of car thefts. They still see from a proportion point of view, a large number of car thefts, except that there is a 25% increase, 25% increase in towns less than 25,000 population. And now, this is from 2019, in 2020, we saw even further increase in smaller towns, less than 50,000 population, to see an upward trend that we're seeing in 14% or so increases in some of those towns, and 44% from 25,000 to 50,000 populations. So a shift is happening where the individuals who were perpetrators of these crimes in larger cities have moved on to the smaller cities. And there's a, this is not from Connecticut, but this is across the country, where 93% increase in motor vehicle thefts were when the keys were left inside since 2013. I think I should read this a couple of times. When, and you will talk to your friends who live in some of the cities, you will say that they will say when, as soon as they come out of the car, they don't put anything outside that is visible in the car, they lock the car, they make sure it is in a well-lit area, they actually never leave the car key there, and that is something that has been learned the hard way, but they learned it very well. On the other hand, we may not have learned some of those things, so if we leave the car key inside, what we are seeing... And, and that is something that has been learned the hard way, but they learned it very well. On the other hand, we may not have learned some of those things, so if we leave the car key inside, what we are seeing is all of them were crimes of opportunity, but also crimes of a perfect storm that is brewing, that is impacting us right now. And then the, the number of car thefts are more, as I mentioned, in the November, December, January and February months during that time. This is another graph that's actually, it's just going to show you what's going on. If you look at the red parts, we have Hartford, and then right below that, the red is New Haven, and then we have Bridgeport. These are the ones which had the highest number of thefts back in 210 to 212. And then this changed a little bit, because you're now seeing the same towns having larger numbers still, but it has spread to the neighboring communities very rapidly. And, and the number of car thefts have decreased in these many areas, but they have remained significant, but the, the surrounding towns are deeply impacted. You have an anomaly with Waterbury, and that, that's a different story, which probably is not for us to look at right now, but that's something that has been an anomaly in, in some of these datas. This is another part that's very interesting, is that most of these activities that were happening were in part of New Haven and surrounding areas. And in the last many years, this has moved northwards. So what we have seen is that there is more of these cases that we are seeing, and this is illustrated very well, in 2015, you see the northward move of the crimes of motor vehicle thefts, and they have just expanded in the greater Hartford area. And as they have increased in the greater Hartford area, it started with Hartford, but then it's spread in all the neighboring towns, including ours, and, and East Windsor, East Hartford, Ellington, as well as West Hartford area as well. So you're seeing a pattern, very classic in, in this particular scenario. From 2007 to 2017, this is from the Sentencing Project, it's a nonprofit based out of Washington, DC, that tracks the national crime trends, and this is for Connecticut. You're seeing since, in the last, from 2007 to 2017, that literally all of the, the issues that had decreased. I know some of these slides are not as visible, so I have the printed copies and outs for all of the council members, and, and the police chief already has this data, and, but the town manager as well, to be able to look at this. I, I think the car theft is where the, there has been an increase in the number of arrests. And then we'll talk about what those arrests mean, because that is something Councilman Manili alluded to, is that it's almost like you arrest somebody after a lot of difficulty, and the next few hours later, that person is out. And then that's part of our challenge that we are dealing with. And then if you look at those individuals, it's a small group of individuals that are responsible for the large number of crimes. Waterbury taught us that they were like about twelve or eighteen young boys who were actually involved in hundred-plus of these cases. By the time they're arrested, they have been involved in from six to twenty car thefts. So this is a, a small group who's doing essentially organized crime from car thefts' perspective. So these are same perpetrators that are there. One of the questions that is asked is, was the, the raising the age and increase the motor vehicle thefts? And that was a study that was performed by the University of New Haven. It's a worthwhile question, but it was answered in 2019. The answer was, it was not, nothing to do with that, because the overall crimes had decreased. There's been a move during Governor Malloy's time, where you were raising the age at that point for juvenile, for being treated as adults. That actually reduced the crime rate in the state of Connecticut. However, what we are seeing is a different issue, and that needs a different strategy going forward, and I think that's what we have to look at. This is what the data had shown from that study from Serco and Scranton, that the property crimes such as, such as burglary and larceny were down approximately forty-two to twenty-six percent. The Connecticut's motor vehicle theft rate decreased until it began to reverse in 2014, but the 2017 rate was still nineteen percent lower than 2008 rate. So, so the trend for the motor vehicle thefts, that needs a strategy, and, and that, that's part of, the, the way I would see this, and I'll, I'll allude to this, is there's a policy part to this, because the law enforcement is trying to do the best that they can with the resources that they have, but I think there's an opportunity for using better tools to address this as well. So in summary, the recent number, increase in cases in the last year has been significant, clearly. There's a movement towards suburban and smaller towns, we are seeing that, and the social programs and prevention and rehabilitation programs have helped. The pandemic and the impact has made things worse, as all support systems stopped, and raising the age was not in, did not increase the crime in Connecticut. And reducing opportunities in communities, like locking the cars and some of the things that we can touch on, which the, the chief, Lindstrom also touched on, is something that we can look at as well, but we need a more comprehensive strategy. The, the, the difficult part of this is that we cannot arrest our way out of this. And, and, and that is, after my conversations with multiple chiefs, and everybody pretty much says that this is not going to be a way we can arrest all these young boys, and, and I don't know much about the girls being involved in this, but we cannot arrest our way, but the existing policies can improve. And a comprehensive strategy is needed, but some, some immediate steps are also needed. And, and like the chief alluded to, is it's a disaster waiting to happen. It's a, it's a matter of time. These brazen kids will, will do something wrong, or some of the homeowners may take things into their hands, and, and it's a disaster or a sad outcome waiting to happen. And that's why we have an opportunity to start to look at interventions that are going to be critical, because we know the trend, we don't have to wait for things to go wrong, we have to start to intervene at this point. I've used this public health modeling, and I, I want you to understand this, when you're trying to have a comprehensive strategy, and this is from a policymaker's lens, what you would be interested right now is learning about the tertiary prevention, but I think the primordial prevention, how do we build a community? If you look at some of the cases, some of the individuals who are impacted, they have had inequities in housing, education, unemployment, and the mental health support system in some of the communities have not been there. And that's part of the challenge, and, and many of these homes have gone through broken situations, and, and, and that's why building the communities is very critical piece of primary prevention. And, and again, investment in the individuals with the communities that are higher risk is going to be critical. These are predictive models that can identify the risk in individuals, and therefore identifying interventions, providing appropriate level of prevention strategies, support systems, mental health support system is going to be critical. That's where we can reduce that risk very significantly. The part, secondary prevention, I think, is, is where we have seen a lot of benefits. There's data that supports the juvenile diversion programs. We have seen, when we have these individuals who have defiant issues, have conduct disorder, behavior-related challenges, when we actually put them into a diversion program, we have been able to save them from moving in the wrong direction. In 2020, we did not have the diversion programs invested in, and we lost that opportunity. And as soon as we lost that opportunity, we actually saw an uptick, and immediately it was, almost could have been predictable. So here's, and then we have data to support from across the country, that diversionary programs are a support that can actually help reduce that risk. And then when, in future, if you ever hear of a conversation on diversion programs for juvenile, make sure that you all stand up and say as a community that, look, this is an investment worth it, because the other end of non-investing has bigger challenges that we have to face, and, and they're dangerous for the children. The other part, I think, about the secondary prevention is minimizing opportunity. The minimizing opportunity is something that people in some of our cities have learned very well, that I alluded to, and I have the last slide on the minimizing opportunity, because no conversation on this should go by without reducing opportunity-related conversations, because some of these individuals who are there, who are starting in this, are trained to go and, and go after the grocery, go after breaking a, a car window and getting something, a wallet or something from the car, so that's a starting point. We actually, if we have a, a resiliency buildup in prevention on the, on that part, we will be in a better shape as, as a town. But then the tertiary prevention, I think this is very critical, and this is what we should, as legislators, be having a conversation around this aspect. Look, the broader strategies are there, but there are, we have a problem when we have young boys who actually are arrested, and, and within that evening, they're doing the same thing, or the next day, or within that few days, they're doing the same thing. And then when they're caught, they said, well, they look at the police officers in the eye, and they say, I'll be out, and you can't do anything about it. That is happening in my conversations with the chief of police. So they are already aware that they are protected in some respects, because that was a policy strategy to try and reduce young boys going into prison. And, and we also know, in most of these cases, it was older individuals who are using them to actually get their benefits. And then we have actually at least one law that we were able to pass this year around this aspect, to make sure that the punishments are strong for individuals who are using or abusing these children by using them for this purpose. So one of the other challenges that we have seen, and, and this is directly coming from the chief of police, is that you arrest somebody, and arresting somebody is very difficult, because it's very dangerous. When you arrest someone, when they're arrested, sometimes there's no access to their previous record. There's no access to the fact that this individual may have been involved in twenty other car thefts, and the judges actually let them go. And, and making sure that access to records in, in 2021 is not restricted on the time and the weekend and so on, so, and, and sometimes these people are just held in detention for six hours, and that's not enough time to get the records for some of these individuals. And if you think that they're a high-risk individual, we need to have the tools to be able to make sure that the individuals who are perpetrators, the judges who are going to make a decision have enough data to make educated decision. And connecting those dots should not require a legislation, but, and if we require a legislation, we have to make a legislation, because we cannot allow this to, to move in the way it is. So that is something that's, in, in my opinion, is, is a low-hanging fruit, to get the access to the, the judges for the criminal record of that individual to make the best decision. The detention duration may have to increase in individuals who are looked at as a high-risk individuals, and, and make sure that the judicial system, data, education and policy is there. I, I think the part that we need to look at is that, does our judicial branch of the government, do they have enough information about the broader outcomes of what's happening? And that's something that's a conversation that needs to happen. I just put in there the custom notification that happens in the project longevity. If, if people know about project longevity in the state of Connecticut, this was a successful case by the police. In our, in our state, what happened was in three of the towns, Hartford, New Haven and Bridgeport, there was a significant increase in violent crimes. The police departments actually do know who are the perpetrators with significant amount of certainty, they know who are the troublemakers. What would happen with this project longevity was that, that they would have intermediaries in the community, and those people would have a very frank conversations with those individuals, and would say, well, I think some police officers who have served in those communities would tell you more, in more depth. I had a chance to talk to Chief Sansom of East Hartford, who was actually serving in Hartford at that time in the community, and his perspective was that people would go to these perpetrators and have a clear conversation, and it's called clear message, that full force of law will be applied if we ever use, see you do this again. And, and when they knew that full force of law is going to be applied and that clear message, they called it clear message. It's, it's like a term for, for the project longevity. And I think we may have to have some capacity to, to look at that opportunity, to have the clear messaging in those small group of individuals who are involved in these crimes, to have a clear message that the full force of law will be applied if you do not move in that direction, because you're putting others at risk, you're putting communities at risk, and, and you're putting yourself at risk. So I think that's the part of the tertiary prevention that I think we have to, to look at from a policy perspective. Again, reducing opportunity, no brainers, but actually sometimes in our busy lifestyle, we have been in a luxury position to not remember some of these things, to keep the cars locked, do not leave the keys inside, no visible valuables, never leave your car running and unattended, have anti-theft devices which are visible, that's better, because you're bringing resiliency in there, park in well-lit areas, and then hide your title, because sometimes even if the police stops individuals, everybody goes to the glovebox, takes the title and says, this is the title, and, and they may just go by without having tests. So I will stop here, it's, it's pretty broad, but I wanted to give you a broader perspective and then narrow it down to what needs to be done, but also recognize that it's a broader strategy that is going to do this. Tertiary prevention alone is going to be a Band-Aid, but we need that Band-Aid, but we need to have a comprehensive strategy. I'll stop here, and I know the chief will have better insight on some of the things, because he lives this and has been working hard, and he actually helped me understand this as well, and after the chief has had the, say, if you have questions, I can answer those as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you very much, Senator Anwar. Chief?
Chief Lindstrom, thank you. And I think Senator Anwar's presentation is a, an excellent segue into, you know, he had said at the end, it's a kind of a broader perspective. I have some rough numbers that will give you an idea of what, from a local perspective, a local lens, what we're seeing. I, I ran a search through our record management system for the last year, from mid-July, last year to mid-July this year, and in South Windsor, we've had twenty-seven thefts of automobiles. So that, the, the data I have is simply that, I don't have evidence from our records management system, what was forced entry, what wasn't, what was recovered, what wasn't, what led to arrests or what wasn't. But on twenty-seven occasions in the last year, citizens in South Windsor have called us and reported their car stolen. Similarly, when we talk about burglaries into motor vehicles, and remember, a burglary isn't taking a motor vehicle, it's entering a motor vehicle, even if you don't force entry, having no reasonable grounds to believe that you, you, you can be legally in that car, you're entering that car with the purpose of committing a crime there, and usually it's going to be a larceny taken from, you know, you're taking something from that car. So in that same time period, over the last year, we've had sixty-seven reports of a burglary into a motor vehicle. What we're seeing is, and what Senator Anwar alluded to, and I concur wholeheartedly, is that this is an issue of a soft target and plentiful targets. So what we're trying to do on our end is, right now, ongoing, is to try to educate the public, and not educate them in a sense of, oh, you should lock your car, but educate them in a sense of reminding them, and trying to develop a, a personal routine. And I'll use my own house as an example, when I go home tonight, I'll lock my car in the driveway, and then, you know, our fleet of cars with a couple of young drivers in the house, we have, you know, a couple that are outside, and I chirp that horn, I chirp the next horn, I know it drives my neighbors nuts, but it also might remind them, oops, I have to do mine too. And you hear this little symphony of horns go up the street, and that's what I want as a police chief. I want that, that community engagement, and, and just like I said, we're trying to change their bedtime routine. You may have seen on our social media recently, it's through the Ring Network, the Ring Camera Network, they have a lot of public awareness materials that are out there, and we've, we've, they've allowed it, they, there are no copyright issues, so we can share that, grab that, reproduce that, and it's, we're putting up on our social media, the nine o'clock routine, and, you know, that's when a lot of us are slowing down, going to bed, shutting the TV off, getting out of our book, going from downstairs to upstairs type of a thing, and that's a good time to try to add these steps into your daily routine. So from an enforcement end, the police are frustrated. I just last week got an email from Hartford Police Department, and it went out to several agencies in the area, and what Chief Thody at Hartford had said was that the state police identified several areas that are what he called the epicenters, or I'm sorry, what the state police called epicenters of the impacted regions. And there, there are a lot of the, the larger cities in the state, Bridgeport, Hartford, Meriden, New Britain, New Haven, New London, Stamford and Waterbury, as those areas that are the quote-unquote epicenters of impact, impacted regions as defined by the state. Chief Thody and the other chiefs from those jurisdictions were invited to a meeting to discuss some grant monies available through OPM, to address not only car thefts and, and car break-ins, but on a larger scale, violence and retaliation and overdoses, because in a way, they're all intertwined, they're all, they're all related to a degree. So what Chief Thody offered was, when he was asked, he was asked by, at this meeting, these chiefs of these larger agencies were asked to identify what agencies are proximal to them and would be involved or could be involved in some kind of a regional initiative to start to address some of these problems. So Chief Thody said that he offered back to the state what he referred to as a bifurcated answer. So he had one answer for violent crime, and then another answer for auto theft. So his violent crime, other problem areas that are, that are proximal to Hartford are Manchester, East Hartford, Bloomfield, West Hartford and New Britain. And then for the auto theft portion of that answer, that's the second branch of it, he added Windsor, Weathersfield, Glastonbury, Newington, Rocky Hill and South Windsor. So I, I, when I reached back out to him, I told him I was glad to see that he included us in, in that, that partnership. Now, just, I had asked you to remember that this is in its stages of infancy, this partnership, we're just getting our wheels spinning and, and looking at what are some of our options. A lot of these investigations that we deal with, the larceny and the burglary investigations, will have will have interface, our investigators will have interface with these other agencies. So I think it's very important that as law enforcers, we go to some kind of a regional approach. It's fruitless for us to just, you know, close our doors, not answer our phones and not use the, the resources available to us and try to solve it on our own, especially when, as Senator alluded to, if we solve it and make an arrest, then what? Are we really solving the problem or are we just trying to plug up a leaking bucket? As law enforcers, we'll do what we can by plugging that hole in the leaking bucket, but I, I agree with him that there are some other leaks within the same bucket. So that's, that's where we stand. So that is hopefully going to start to take more shape in, in the weeks to come. This is just recent correspondence from him within the last week. I know, and I have in front of me a, a letter that I was forwarded, that the town manager from Glastonbury wrote to the governor's office, and it discusses the same thing. If I read it to you, I would just be regurgitating what Senator Anwar said and some of what I added. When I started, I said that the law enforcement is frustrated. To give you some idea, in a separate search, when actually a matter that I, I spoke to last time I was in about motor vehicle violations, and that search alone, in the last year, South Windsor Police have been engaged in 10 pursuits, and we're not going to pursue. That's, the state, statewide pursuit policy is that we're not going to chase them. I know that, I support that. I don't think it's worth crashing into anyone who's not involved, and I certainly don't think it's worth forcing a young inexperienced adrenaline-filled driver into a situation where they have to drive like it's, you know, it's not. It's not worth running a kid into a tree or, or into another car or anything like that. So I don't know what the answer is. I'd love to tell you I did, but I'll tell you that we, I asked our staff and, and my command staff to pass word down that we're very strict with our pursuit policy, and if we pull in behind a car and we go to stop it for any reason, if we don't have reason to think that it's a, that they were involved in a serious violent crime, and we turn the lights on to pull them over, and they go, they're going. Officer radios it in, said they're not stopping, they shut it down, they do a quick police, I'm sorry, a quick pursuit review, a quick pursuit report, and, and that's it. We are not chasing these folks. Some other jurisdictions might be taking a little bit more liberty with that policy, but we will not in this town. So that's, you know, that's my, my feedback. The other thing that, in the Glastonbury letter, I think is noteworthy, and it just, it polishes the point, or I don't even want to say polishes, it further emphasizes the point that Senator Anwar made and where some of our frustration lies. As Senator Anwar and I spoke a couple of weeks ago, we had a, a good conversation. We're, we're kind of both on the move, so it, it wasn't a lengthy conversation, but I think we hit on the important points that this is definitely a multi-pronged solution that we have to face. That's where I feel a, a little bit ill-equipped, because I can look at it through a law enforcement lens, but I can't look at it through a mental health professional lens, I can't look at it through a legislator's lens, I can't look at it through a judge's lens. So I look at it through just mine. But I think it is a multi-pronged approach. Certainly, law enforcement plays an active role, and that's what I'm going to work with Chief Thody and the other regional chiefs to, to address. There's, there are, I think, are some legislative improvements that can occur, and I know the legislature is aware of that, and I think they're gonna, they're gonna work to do that. Public awareness, education, not even educating people who live on, you know, Main Street USA about locking their cars, but I have here, educate the suspect and the victim. You know, we have to start to teach what the impact is, and I think that gets into some of the, the primordial, primary, secondary, tertiary aspects of this is, and that's what the diversionary programs can start to, now that they're starting to spool back up post-pandemic, they can start to address some of those things. So when you look at the multi-pronged approach, we're talking law enforcement, legislative, public awareness, everything all the way down to the mental health issues that are, that are prevalent in the, in the community. But just, I'll clo, in closing, I'll refer to what Glastonbury referenced, and this is what I started to get at before, is just to, to further emphasize some of our frustrations and, and how this is a multi-pronged approach. Glastonbury was fortunate on one occasion to, to identify and locate suspects in a stolen car case. They arrested them, and the law only allows us to hold those kids for six hours. And then we either have to apply for an order to detain, and that carries, that, in order to be granted, that carries with it certain criteria that have to be met, and a judge has to sign that. More often than not, that, and it's, we don't run into it that often because we're not making a lot of arrests, and when we do, usually it's a summons, kid doesn't have a history, or we don't have access to a history, and we, and they're out the door. There have been cases in Glastonbury where parents are begging the police to hang on to the kids longer, and the police can't. So that's where I think it, it's a very good illustration of how, how complicated this issue is. It's not just Glastonbury, it's not just South Windsor, it's not just any town in Connecticut, it's all of them. So the problem is rampant. I think in the meantime, our best bet is to continue our public awareness campaign. The manager and I have discussed some different ideas and some different, I don't want to say solutions, but strategies that will mitigate hopefully the problem. And, and we're going to go from there and do what we can to keep the people in this town safe and to keep visitors in the town safe and, and keep their property safe. Counselor Manilli?
Thank you, Chief, and I really appreciate both the Senator and you. But yeah, I've, I've seen it on social media, but for those of the people who don't have social media, could you go over that, that nine o'clock routine that you mentioned and that you talked about, like that's on your Facebook page? Can you say that like out loud for everybody else?
Yeah, quite, quite simply, and it's, you know, the, the nine o'clock routine is to remove your valuables from your car, lock your car, and make sure your home is locked. And, and it's that simple. It's just, it's unfortunate that it has come to us having to remember to do that, but, but we do. And, and I encourage my, my own family to do that. I encourage my mother to do that, I encourage my neighbors to do that, and I encourage anyone who calls my office to do that. And the unfortunate part is that people miss that. I miss it. I'm sure there are nights where, where I go to bed and I forget. There's, there's ways to do it, and like I said, a lot of it's coming out of the Ring Network, and they've been very helpful. But really, locking your car, I, at my house, I keep the driveway illuminated as best I can overnight, but I lock my car, remove my valuables or, or hide them from sight, like Senator Anwar suggested, and, and, and you try to harden the target. We're seeing very few, if any, broken glass next to these stolen cars.
One more question, Chief, I got no one.
Your turn.
Hey, I'm on the roll.
Yes.
Senator Anwar alluded to the fact that, he said title to the car, but I think he meant the registration, right? Now, if I get pulled over, I mean, and I hidden my, usually it goes in your glove box, right? You know, if in case you get pulled over, you get your insurance card and registration. So if, if I put that someplace else, like, like under the backseat, say, like, and the cop pulls me over, and he comes to my window, he says, and I'm like, well, look, it's like under the, the seat, you know, like, is that, is that, is that legit? Like, what, what do you say to the cop when he, I'm like, well, it's under the car seat because the chief told me to put it there. You know what I'm saying? Like, you know, like, what do you do?
What I would encourage you to do, and what I hope every officer in, in Connecticut would do, and especially in South Windsor would do, is I want you to have that dialogue with them.
Okay.
Every, it's easy for me to say, because I'm not the one who, I just turn, when you see those blinky lights come on in your mirror-
I'm nervous.
-you get nervous, your stomach turns. Mine still does when I see them, and I try not to see them as often at all, but when you do, your stomach turns, and hopefully they go past you onto the next thing. But have that conversation with them. So if you get pulled over, put your window down, keep your hands visible, and I tell my kids, my young new drivers in, in my house, hands, hands on the wheel and wait. And when they come up to the car, they'll tell you, I need to see your license, your registration, your insurance card. Okay, officer, my license is in the glove box, my license is in my pocket, my registration is in the trunk, do you mind if I get it? Once you have, and if they're, if for some reason they're, something has cued them to be more vigil, uh, hyper-vigilant and, and ready or perceiving some kind of other threat, they'll tell you that. But 99 times out of 100, it's, it can be a very simple, straightforward exchange. You can keep your registration wherever you want to keep it. But like I said, we're not seeing forced entry into cars. So I, I don't necessarily, when I say remove your valuables, I'm talking your laptop. I tell my son to take his charging cord out of the USB port, coil it up and put it in the center console. So then if you don't see that, that white iPhone charging cord when you walk by, then they're going to keep on going. If you, they don't see a purse on the front seat, they're going to keep on going, and they're going to pull a door handle, and if it doesn't open, it doesn't open. If it opens, they sit in it, the kids have reported back to the police, they pull the door handle, door opens, they sit in it, they put their foot on the brake and they hit the button. And if this fob is in the car, it's going to start. And they know that. And they've reported back to us that when they walk down the streets looking, and, you know, the stolen cars are related to other crimes, they'll come into a neighborhood in a stolen car and, and with three, four, five kids in a car, and they'll get out and they'll go, they'll go shopping. And if, they, they have reported back to us that when they walk down the street, they can tell if it's a newer, higher-end car, and it's sitting there and the mirror, the side mirrors are folded in, they know it's locked. They won't even walk up the driveway because it's not, they'll go to the next house where the mirrors are out. So they're very savvy, they're very smart, and they know what they can and can't do, and they know what we can and can't do. And, and the problem has, has metastasized to what it is today.
Is, is it still legit, like to have your, your insurance card and, and like say your registration, like a picture of it on your phone, could you show that's the cop?
The insurance card, yes. There's provisions in the law that allow us to, or allow you to use your phone or any device to, to provide a reasonable, yeah, you know, that's, that's fine.
Yeah, because I was thinking if, if your fob was like even close to the, the garage, even though it's in, in your house, it, it's still sometimes close enough to start the car. You know, so if they get, if they get into the car, start the car, and they also would have the registration, you know, that could, so if they, if a stranger got pulled over, he could very easily show, or she, keep saying a guy, it could very well be a girl. You know, I'm not trying to make any kind of judgments, but, so the person could, you know, show a registration and she'll prove that, that, you know, it's that, it's somebody else's car. So you can have it on your phone or no?
The registration, I would have in the car, a hard copy, yeah. The, the insurance card, insurance card, like I said, there are provisions in the law that will allow you to have it on your phone. Your license is your license, you need to have that. But that, you probably usually, statistically, most of us keep that in our wallet and keeps it on our person or in a pocketbook or something, but usually not-
But you could always produce that later on, if you-
What's that?
But couldn't you always produce a driver's license later on?
Yes.
A lot of the kids, they, they don't drive, they don't, they don't carry-
They should.
I was just telling you.
You should have it with you.
I got a couple there. Oh, no, I, I don't have to carry it.
Thank you, thank you, Counsel Manilli. Counsel Lidecker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Senator Anwar and Chief Lyncham for, for coming to speak today. I appreciated the presentations and the information. I think one thing that I kind of want to reiterate into this conversation, which I didn't hear, was talking to the juveniles themselves. That's what I do. I've talked to them, I've had them psychologically evaluated, I've argued their bond to the judges. I think it's a misnomer to say that they're not going to jail for these crimes, because they are. I have had kids go to not juvenile detention, but to Manson Youth, which is where they hold pre-detention kids from 18 to 21. So that's kind of baby adult jail. There are strict guidelines that the judges and the police have to deal with, with these. But what I hear from my clients, they are kids from broken homes, they are kids who are left alone for long periods of time because they're single-family homes and their parent is desperately trying to work to keep a roof over their head with kids in the home. They do not have extracurricular activities, they do not have family support. So I think it's great that we're talking about this and we're talking about the impact to the citizens on the crimes that are being committed. But I think we also, and, and I really appreciated Senator Anwar's, your prevention chart, because there are so many positive things in there that we really need to start focusing on. Schools should have a requirement of extracurricular activities. These kids should be doing something in the afternoon. They're not playing baseball, they're not involved in their communities, they, their, their family supports are non-existent. So when we want to start dealing with this issue, we need to start looking at funding for programming for these children. It's not enough to just say diversionary programs, let's, you know, hold them longer for six hours, let's not just, I, I mean, one of the restrictions for a judge is, is the, is this child a risk to the public? Stealing a car is not a risk to the public. There, there's, you know, sometimes when these kids are coming in, there's not documentation that they've been doing 100 miles an hour on the highway or that they ran somebody over. I mean, there are times, you know, my kid who went to NYI, there were, there were issues there, but, so you can't just say, let's change these criteria. You have to say also the conversations, how do we support these kids? How do we support these families? So it's got to also be a conversation of funding at the state level of how are we getting these families access into the community and access into the, into programming? Because these kids are bored, these kids are victims of trauma, these kids are victims of abuse, and they're, 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 some of them are drug addicts, they have easy access to marijuana, and that's only going to get easier now. I mean, so there's got to be other ways besides just locking our cars. And we really have to remember that when it comes time to fund these programs, those programs need to be funded, because these kids are traumatized and these kids are bored and these kids are not involved. And it, I, I think the chief said it best, it has to be a multi-pronged solution. Some of the kids I've had evaluated at 14, 15 years old are coming back saying that they're sociopaths, a sociopath at age 14, because they didn't have that family support, because their father has been in and out of jail, because their mother is a single mom and there's three kids in the home, and he's the one who's got to be home with his siblings to try and raise them, because she can't make ends meet, because we haven't given enough support to those families in our communities. We haven't required this kid to go out and play team sports and get involved with his friends at school. He's cut off. So he rebels and he goes out, and this is what happens. So it, it really does need to be a multi-pronged approach for this, but I, I really need to stress, these kids are getting arrested, these kids are going to jail. So you can't just say that they're getting off scot-free, because they're not. In the real world, in the courts, some of these kids are going to jail. So it's, it's very frustrating, there is no pursuit, so unless you find their DNA in the car, or unless you have something that ties them to it, I get the arrests are hard, but eventually, that, that is where they get. So I think we need to remember that this is a community approach and it needs to be a community solution. And, and we have to remember that year after year, when the funding is being requested for certain program, and we can't just shut it down and be like, nope, you know, let's just lock our cars, you know, we're, these kids need to go to jail. I mean, the, the research shows that a child's brain isn't fully developed until age 25. That was the whole point of Raise the Age, was rehabilitative programming for these kids under the age of 18, and that program is lacking in our criminal system and our juvenile system, and we need to start giving the funding for that. And to Counsel Manilli's point, it is mostly boys. Their brains mature significantly slower than girls do. So it really needs to be a multi-pronged, community, statewide approach, and, and putting them in jail is not, is not the option. It really needs to be more rehabilitative and more familiar supports. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Lidecker. Counselor Evans?
Thank you, and thank you both for coming and speaking to this. I did write down a lot of thoughts about this, and I'm going to try to go through them all. It kind of echoes a bit of what Counselor Lidecker says, so I hope it's not too repetitive. But, you know, I'm just, it's so important, all of this is so important on so many levels. I'm glad to see that we're really looking at the why, and I think that is so important. Before we even started, I wrote down, just for my own mental note, root of the problem, the why. So why is this happening and why are people doing this? And I think back to my time teaching and working with at-risk students and, and just rather than the, what was the word you used? Rather than the, the punitive, looking at the preventative. And why was the student doing it? Why were they acting this way? Rather than continuously punishing them, looking back to see why it was happening. And it sounds like a lot of those programs do exist, but they were kind of pushed aside by the pandemic. So I think like this is, doesn't sound like it's coming from residents of South Windsor with these break-ins to these cars. So I'm not sure that we can up those services within town and necessarily make that difference, but at the state level, I think that that is so important to look at the communities around and continue, as Counsel Lidecker said, to fund the programs and the offerings that will help dig into the why. And as you mentioned, the primordial, the prevention, the primordial and the primary. So looking at that larger factor. So I think just reactive only gets us so far. It's going to deter some, but more importantly, really just getting to that root and using the resources to address all of the needs. So I think in the long run, it might cost something to do that, there's going to be a higher cost, but that cost is less than through the judicial services and through, you know, these, ending up in jail or getting some- um, you know, these, ending up in jail or getting some type of, um, you know, punitive services related. Um, so I think really just going back to the root of it is, is what is so important to me. But I do think, you know, what we can do here in South Windsor, like the chief is talking about, is also equally important, um, but continuing to investigate the state level and working to go backwards, um, like so many, going back to the teacher again, um, so many teachers go back to kindergarten, because they work with students who are having difficulty with reading, and they feel like going back to kindergarten, you can really get to the beginning and, and dig into the problem before it becomes a bigger problem, whereas high school, when I'm teaching a student who has difficulty reading, um, it's already gone so far. So going back to the beginning and really looking at the basics of how can we address the issue? So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilor Evans. Councilor, okay. Councilor King.
Um, I appreciate, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I appreciate the presentation by both of you. The question that I had kind of, uh, goes off of Counselor Evans, she kind of alluded to it, is do either of you have information in regards to, uh, how many of these situations happen from within as opposed to without? I.e., do we have, uh, and I'm thankful to hear that the chiefs are working together, 'cause that's also a big thing. I don't, the last thing that I want to do, and there's a, a method to my madness in asking this question, is to criminalize people that come from different communities, because sometimes it's from within our own community. Contrary to popular belief, uh, you have young men and women that don't have anything to do from our own community that are doing these crimes, and yet our community is suggesting that it's from outside. And that may very well be the case, but I just wanna kind of have an idea in regards to, 'cause even though it seems like, as to use your word, chief, the epicenter might be, yes, I get that, but at the same time, some of the, the crimes that are perpetrated could be, again, because the youth that live in the area know that on this road, everybody is in bed by eight, and all their cars are open, you know? And so do you guys have an idea in regards to that? You may not, but, you know?
I, I don't have, like, as I said when I started, the, the numbers that I brought with me are, are really just, um, to give you a rough sense of what we're seeing. I don't have numbers on, um, arrests or suspect identities or suspect, um, towns of residence. Uh, and I just want to clarify, I know you, you're, um, you didn't, uh, necessarily take issue with the term, but that, that, uh, that term of the epicenter of impacted areas is, is not my term?
No, 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 right.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted to make sure, 'cause I agree.
No, not at all.
I think that, I, I would be lying to you if I said that there were no South Windsor kids out there running amok. Um, anecdotally, it, it seems that it's, um, it seems that it's, uh, kids from other areas, other towns, but again, that's anecdotal. That, and that doesn't mean, um, that, that doesn't even pin it down to one in particular. It, it could be anywhere, 'cause it's so easy for kids to get around, especially once they're behind the wheel, they can get anywhere. Um, so it, it's all, without doing a, a lot of research into looking what our numbers are, um, it, it's anecdotal at, at most.
Thank you.
Sure. All right, thank you, Councilor King. Senator Anwar?
I just want to make a comment on this. Um, I, I don't know the answer to that question, but, uh, the, the chief of police of East Hartford suggested that the, the cars that were stolen from East Hartford, uh, about eighty percent were identified in Hartford, they were recovered from Hartford. But that doesn't mean was where the kids were from. So, so that is the only little piece of data, but no information on the children.
All right, thank you, Senator Anwar. Thank you, Councilor King. Any other questions? Councilor Snyder.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, thank you for the presentations, um, Senator and chief. Uh, this is really, um, we are hearing, I'm sure all counselors are, I'm hearing every day from people who are being affected by this, and as the, these, um, different types of events are happening, and these, these issues are going on around town and along many, around many other towns, as the chief alluded to, is that these are starting to happen during the day. So a constituent contacted me, and, um, it, it happened like at three o'clock in the afternoon. And, you know, I, I know people, when you live in our community, I know people come in and out of the house, they're running errands, they're picking their kids up at soccer, they're dropping them off at baseball, you know, and, and everybody does need to be vigilant about locking up their cars and not leaving valuables in sight. But, you know, it's, it's wrong, it's just wrong in every, on every level, that these, and I'll, and mostly from what I've read is that they're juveniles, you know, are out there perpetrating these types of crime. The woman in Glastonbury was shot at because she came out and said, hey, what are you doing out there? You know, kind of rough somebody up, not, you know, just say from the door, hey, get out of here, scare them away. Um, and there's a lot of really inner frustration and disgust with the way these things, these things are happening. And, you know, I guess it could be, these kids, it doesn't really matter where they're from, because they're doing it, you know, and they're getting, and they're getting away with it. And they know they get away with it. I mean, uh, my nephew is on the state task force for, they pulled him from Bridgeport. And it's the, and it's, you know, you'd say, oh, they have broke, and I get, they come from broken homes, they don't have the family support, and all of those kind of things affect how a child grows up. But like, when they say it takes a village, it does take a village, you know? And so unfortunately, some kids don't have a village, but that doesn't give them the right to go out and, and, and brazenly go onto other people's property and steal things. And now we see a little teeny bit of aggression happening with these kids who become a little bit more aggressive. They're doing it during the day, now that people are going back to work, if people are, are, um, ride sharing or taking a bus or a train, um, they know cars may be around, and, and, you know, you can pump more money and more money and more money into the system to help these kids, and, and, you know, it's not that I'm opposed to that, but it still happens. You know, my nephew was a Bridgeport cop for twenty-five years, and unless you're out there, being out there and seeing what's happening, if somebody comes to my property or to any, anybody's property and thinks they have the right to go in there and steal, and, and steal a car, steal belongings, steal valuables, another person told me these kids were in their garage, stealing things from their garage. This is not right. This community, as well as many other communities, have had it up to here. And you see, I think the chief, some of the chiefs, if I recall, and chief, maybe you can help me with this, but some of the police chiefs in the state got together and did a review of the, um, I think that the Bridgeport police chief kind of led it with some of the, you know, New Haven and some of the other areas down there, um, in the southern part of the state, New Haven area, county, said that, um, the increase of crimes, these, and they call them, you know, different types of, uh, you know, breaking and entry and these, these car thefts, have increased drastically since these laws have changed. And, and, and my nephew would, my nephew arrested the same kid eight times in two weeks, and now the kid knows my nephew's name and goes, hey, officer, I'll see you in six hours, you know? And it's a joke. And I'm, he's living this, these people are living this. And, and unless you've had something stolen like that, or been broken into, who knows? Is it gonna, what is it gonna escalate to? But, you know, I don't like the fact that we don't take any action with these kids. It's like we're saying, oh, it's okay, you can come in and you can steal things and you can come on our property, we're not chasing you, if we can't catch you, we're not arresting you. So then they, they, that, that just emboldens them. It, it kind of go ahead and, and, and lets them become more and more embrasened with, I'm gonna go do what I want to do. So, um, I, you know, I, I really turn to the legislature to some of the, a lot of, a lot of these crimes are not being reported. I mean, certain crimes of breaking and entry, people, they're not even being reported. That's why our numbers go down. So, you know, I'm just really, I'm speaking for probably a good two or three dozen constituents that have called me, or I've seen them at the grocery store or whatever, and they said, you have to, you know, we have to reach out to our senator and our representatives and have them doing something in Hartford to try to, you know, it's not okay to go into somebody's house and steal the thing, it's not okay to break and enter into a community, it's not okay to do that. You know, and, and people have, they have to stop, or we have to have some kind of, you know, some kind of action that we take that lowers the hammer down and says, listen, stop doing it. And when you talk about reaching out to the, to the young people that are doing this, I can't tell you how many cops, police officers that I know that try doing that. The mothers of some of these kids have contacted police officers and said, don't let them out, keep them overnight, let them spend the night in jail, you know? And parents are like, just, you know, of these perpetrators. So I, I, there's just gotta be a way that we can handle this, and it's not okay to do that. And I don't have to be, you know, I don't think people in our community or any of these other communities have to be so upset and so worried, oh my God, you know, I'm, I forgot to lock my car, they come out and the, my neighbor came out across the street at five in the morning to go to the gym, and these kids, there was kids in his car. He's a big guy, and he chased him off. Now what if they had a gun? And I think those are the types of things that you, you allude to as well, chief, is that it can become more serious and more tragic. So, you know, just saying, oh, it's okay, we gotta help them, we gotta do things, it, I agree, get the programs together, get it moving, but it's just costing so much money. Why do you think our insurance rates go up? Who's paying for all this? The Joe Q. Citizen is paying for it all. Um, but at some point in time, people that aren't breaking the law shouldn't have to be, you know, terrorized because of their, in their own community. So, I know I went on, but it's just, I'm hearing from so many people, it's just so frustrating that we have just got to get our legislators, you know, to kind of roll up their sleeves and get to work on it and do something with that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilor Snyder. Councilor Kowalski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just a quick comment. Um, thank you, chief and Senator Anwar. The information tonight was very informative. Um, it, one quick comment after hearing what the two of you had to say, and then Counselor Leidecker, I don't have the answers, but what I'm hoping is, when that discussion does take place, as the chief said, it's, it's, it's a multi-armed monster that has to tackle this. So I would hope with the legislature, they would, you know, you would have the chiefs involved, but also have some of the attorneys who are also dealing with this on the front lines. And you've got all these shareholders, um, and hopefully, the group that gets pulled together can hit it from different aspects and, and maybe stop, ascend the tide. Um, I, I don't have the answer, I'll leave it to smarter people than myself, but hopefully we can get all the shareholders involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Kowalski. Councilor King?
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hesitate to say this, but I feel compelled to, I think, um, what we can't do, in my humble opinion, is be in denial on both sides. I think if there's one thing that we learned, or should have learned, for example, from the opioid epidemic, is that when we decide how we're going to do things, we have to make sure that, for example, all of a sudden we don't say, oh, it's just a problem here, let's, let's change the way that we say incarcerate people. Now all of a sudden, we're gonna give helpful hands. We need to be doing that from the door. And so the first avenue should not always be to incarcerate, but at the same time, we can't be in denial in regards to what are we doing to potentially, and I, I agree with you, breaking is wrong, you learn that from the age of two or three, stealing is wrong. I don't, you know, where people come from, but we used to get spanked when we stole. I took money off my daddy's dresser, he counted his change, who took it? Steven Junior was the tallest, there was a spanking when he got home from work. Now you can't do that too much more these days. However, my point is, is that there were consequences, but as my mom said to my father, stop leaving the change on the dresser. If you know Steven Junior is taking it, why are you tempting him? Now for your teachers, I appreciate the smiles, 'cause you can appreciate that. And so even to the people that say, I don't have the lights, I don't have, yeah, but what you do have is the opportunity to lock your car. Lock your car, the chief has said it on more than one occasion, and it's something that, that's why they give you a key to lock. And so if you know that it is happening in your town, and I'm sure there's gonna be comments and all that, but that's why you have a key. You have a key to start the car, you have a key to lock the car. There used to be a time, and I'm not the oldest person on this council, council, where there was a key to start and a key to lock. And so at that particular time, you know, there was a, a level of responsibility with that individual. So the only reason I, I'm saying all that is to make sure that we understand that there is responsibility on both sides. We can't just assume that, uh, just because we live in the town of South Windsor, well, this is not the Wizard of Oz that nothing wrong happens here. And now we're seeing certain things, the chief, the senator, we are going to put certain things in place, hopefully, to, but at the same time, there is responsibility on both sides, with the community and with those individuals who are still unfortunately learning right from wrong, and hopefully we'll put things in place so that there is a message, a clear message that's sent. When you do make a mistake, and, and I should follow it up with this, and I thank you, Mr. Mayor, that there is an opportunity to rehabilitate from that mistake, that we don't just say, when you're of that age, because you have nothing better to do with your time, that you stole a car and now this is on your record for life, which keeps you from getting a job, which keeps you from getting this, which keeps you from doing that, but there is an opportunity to rehabilitate. But more importantly, there's responsibility on both sides. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Councilor King. Any other questions? Councilor Lopez? Oh, excuse me, Senator Anwar?
With your permission, Mr. Mayor, I, I just wanted to, um, just mention the, to, um, Counselor Snyder and, and, uh, Counselor Kowalski, I, I, we hear you. We hear the community, we hear what you're saying, and we recognize that we have a responsibility to protect these children as well, uh, because these are our children too, our state's children. And, and the families are our families who are feeling threatened, and, and I think, um, that's why I wanted to go through a presentation with a comprehensive strategy, because i- if we do, uh, just the tertiary part, we are not serving our children well. And then we will take care of, uh, other issues that will develop, we, we know that. And, and, and the good news is, this is well-studied, the diversionary strategies have worked. Um, the last year is an anomaly, and I hope and pray we never have to have a year like that, and all years going forward will be better, where we can continue to invest in the communities, continue to invest in our children, in education and support systems, and mental health systems. Um, look, the children who are perfectly healthy, they're having mental health issues right now, and the ones who are actually having no problem, had mental health issues to begin with, behavioral issues, it's been a nightmare for them. And, and as a result of that, their lives have changed and they have not been guided by right individuals and we're using them. So we have to put the money and resources there, but also we have to make sure that our police is protected in this situation, because these children are, before the age of twenty-five, you do not have rationality, if you go back and think about ourselves, maybe, but, but there, the decision that people make, for somebody that, in Glastonbury, this kid who actually shot, um, this is a disaster waiting to happen, and we cannot allow this to happen, because the access to some of these weapons is easy to some of these individuals, and, and also their decision-making may not be at par, and, and they are also afraid. And they're being groomed by these individuals, these, these organized criminals, if you will. And, and as a result in those situations, they're going to make, make a bad choice. So protecting those children, protecting the police and protecting the, the community, we will need to have the tertiary part to be cleaned up. And, and I think that's what, uh, and, and when I listen to all of you, you're actually saying the same thing, because in that pyramid that I explained, you're saying, take care of the base, but take care of the top at the same time. And then we hear you, and, and we will do what we can to try and address this, because the status quo is not safe for people. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Senator Anwar. Councilor Lopez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, but Senator Anwar actually alluded to what I wanted to say. Um, an increasing in, in pursuit will really put our police officers in, in, in danger, and that's something that, uh, that we have to think twice to, to start doing. But I also wanted to mention that, um, uh, automobile insurance rates, they go up because of physical damage and, and bodily injury, not necessarily because of the burglary. So the comprehensive part of it hasn't gone up in many years.
Thank you, Councilor Lopez. Any other comments, questions? Oh, Deputy Mayor Pendleton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Senator, for coming this evening and presenting, uh, your, your slideshow to us, and thank you, chief, for, uh, your comments. My question, I think, is at the state level. Um, if, the funding needs to be there, that was alluded to, to create what? To do what? Um, not that we need to know, but I haven't heard, I haven't heard real things that are set in stone yet as to what the state is going to do. Um, so I was hoping that if, in fact, there were either programs... So, I was hoping that if, in fact, there were either programs or there were a plan of action, I mean, we know what's identified, but if there's a plan of action or various things that are being done, maybe the Senator can bring that back to us at a later time and explain to us what the state is doing. And that takes me to locally, and going to the Chief, and after hearing the Chief, speaking with the other Chiefs, and the Chief of Hartford, and identifying the towns, and South Windsor being one of them, Chief, if there's anything that comes out of that as to what we can do locally, please come back to us and tell us that. You know, what, what can we do here in South Windsor, besides educate our citizens on safety and protection of their own properties? You know, and, and to secure their own property? So, if the Chief could come back to us in the future and let us know what's going on. And if you've never been a victim of theft, it's a horrible feeling, of which we were in my family, my own wallet was stolen, and someone broke into our car and used our duffel bag to go to every other car and steal everybody else's stuff. So, it's a very violating feeling, and I feel horrible for the folks in South Windsor that have experienced that, and our citizens. I understand, 'cause I've been there. So, I'm hoping locally that we can continue here to educate our folks, and if there is anything locally that we can do, Mr. Maniscalco, maybe with some of the education with some of our youth here in, in this community, through human services, or if there's any programs that we may need to invest in and/or create, if you could get back to us with that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Deputy Mayor Pendleton.
One more thing, real quick.
Councilman Neely, yes?
Thank you again. Chief, is there a way you could just like reassure the citizens of South Windsor that no, no matter like how little they think it, it is, or if nothing, if they don't believe that anything will get done, reporting an incident will help you and, and your fleet? Because sometimes, the people, the citizens, they see it on their ring, and then they, they call Manielee, which is a nice thing to do, but I can't do anything for them. But if they call you, even if you don't pursue, and like drive and, and chase after them, you, you at least, you know, keep track of like, you gotta report on such and such street, it happened again, you know, and the time it happened. So, you can, you can gather some data and maybe come up with something or a solution. But can you just reassure them that it's not frivolous for them to just call you if something goes wrong on their property?
Sure. And, and when someone calls the police department, I just wanna remind everyone that we are one of, we're, we're, our agency is of a dying breed, where you still get a real person who answers the phone, instead of having to press one to talk to another robot, to talk to another robot. And we try to impress upon all of our staff, from the newest dispatcher to the most senior patrolman, that when someone calls, they're calling because it's, it's the worst day of their life, or their year, or their decade. And we try to be sensitive to that, and I, we always want them to call. If you call, i- if you think you should've called, you're too late. And with that comes that understanding that we might not be able to solve it for you, we might not be able to solve it for you right away, we might not be able to solve it for you at all, but we wanna know about it. And to your point, we can use the, the location and the data to come up with some predictive intelligence, so that helps us decide where and when we're gonna deploy our resources with heat maps and, and activity and calendars and days of the week, and look at frequency of occurrences and things like that. It's very important that we know. So, I don't ever want anyone in this town to, to hesitate to call us. That's why, you know, that's why they, they pay their taxes, and, and that's why we'll go out there and, and we're gonna give it the best effort that we have and deploy any of our, any resources, whether it's a stolen iPod, or whether it's a stolen Lamborghini it is deserving of, and as you guys, a few of you spoke to, it's a very violating feeling. And regardless of what was taken, it's deserving of our attention and all of our resources that their tax dollars pay for. So, our staff is aware of that, and, and, and we try to reiterate that, that philosophy to them. But yes, I want people to call all the time. If they're not sure if they should've, like I said, they're, they're too late in calling us.
Even if you just like send like a, a car, police car, like to that street, because like, you know, that might deter somebody who's gonna try and break in or attempt to do it, 'cause it's, they seem to like, you know, do it in groups, you know, they, it seems like it hit a whole bunch of houses on a certain like, like, say, a cul-de-sac. But if they see a cop drive by, it might think, they might think twice before they go, they hit that area again, you know, 'cause there seems to be some areas that seem to be get hit a lot more than others.
Yep.
Maybe because they're isolated, or, or there's just easy access to a highway, or something like that. But I think you're just telling everybody that it's not frivolous to call was, was a great thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilman Neely. Chief Lindstrom and Senator Anwar, thank you very much for your time tonight. We really appreciate it. I think it's a complicated issue. I will offer this suggestion, if, if the state legislature or the chief of police group that is meeting would like to consider forming a task force of town government officials, I think anyone on this council would be willing to serve, to meet with other towns, officials to talk about the common problems that we have. I think the more, the more people we get together to think about possible solutions, the more we can work with each other, and maybe we'll come up with something that will help. But I think anyone on this council would be happy to be part of that, if that's something you folks would consider.
I'll keep that in mind as we start our organizational meetings. Thank you.
Okay. I just hope I won't be found in the lobby afterwards for volunteering everyone, but thank you. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Senator Anwar, appreciate it, and we'll, we'll expect, we hope, we'll be expecting some more updates from both of you as this, 'cause this is not gonna be something that's gonna be solved easily.
And one last thing before we wrap this topic up. Anyone who's listening at home, I, I think it's just about nine o'clock, so, you know, not for nothing, but that nine o'clock routine now is a-
Perfect timing, yes. Perfect timing.
Thank you.
Nine o'clock. Thank you all, thank you both. All right, thank you, council members. We are at item 10, reports from committees. Are there any committee reports? Anyone used to share with us? If not, we'll go on to item 11, our consent agenda, and our first reading, Councilor Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First reading, motion to approve agenda items 11A, capital A, as a first reading on the consent agenda.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any questions about the item? If not, we'll go on to voting. All in favor, aye. Any opposed, nay? All right, and Councilman Neely?
Motion to approve agenda items 11A, B, as a first reading on the consent agenda.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any questions about this agenda item? If not, we'll go on to voting. All those in favor, aye. Aye, any opposed, nay? Thank you. Our second reading, Deputy Mayor Pendleton.
Motion to approve agenda items 11B, capital A, as a second reading on the consent agenda.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any questions about this item? If not, we'll go on to voting. All those in favor, aye. Aye, any opposed, nay? All right, Councilor Lidecker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to approve agenda items 11BB through 11BD as a second reading on the consent agenda.
All right, the motion's been made and seconded. Any questions about any items on this agenda? Or this section of the agenda, I'm sorry? If not, we'll go on to voting. All those in favor, aye. Aye, any opposed, nay? All right, thank you. We will go on to unfinished business. Our first discussion item, Councilor Evans.
Thank you. In regards to the memorial to honor residents who have been impacted by COVID-19, I'm happy to report that we have made some progress. We're in preliminary discussions with Home Depot to provide the materials needed to create the memorial. I know that the town manager or some town staff are working with them to complete a grant request for those materials. I believe also that John Caldwell has gone over to kind of evaluate what we might need. So, my hope is that for next meeting, we can really have that solidified, as well as potentially have the additional donations that were verbally committed from other businesses in town that we have not received yet. The other thought I wanted to mention was that, seeing as how a huge component that we're continuing to find from COVID-19 is increasingly the mental health piece, for when this memorial is unveiled, or when we have a ceremony to open the memorial, is that we consider inviting members from the community to come to speak, if they have been impacted and feel like they would like to participate, as well as to find a way to tie in mental health services. So, to have someone come and speak about mental health services available, or to somehow provide information at the memorial for those that may visit it and be able to have access to that. So, just something to consider as we continue to work on this.
All right, thank you. Any, any questions, any further discussion? All right, thank you, Councilor Evans. We'll go on to our next discussion item. Councilor Evans, Arts Commission.
Okay, with the Arts Commission, we do have a very, very rough draft of what the ordinance may look like. We're just trying to work through the, getting into the hands of the right people before we have a rough draft for the council to work with. I think that the time between now and September, we should be able to do that, to be able to have something for the council to consider, to review as a rough draft for September. So, we'll just keep working on that.
All right, thank you, Councilor Evans. Any questions, comments, discussion? Councilor Kowalski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, in, in doing a little bit of research on this, I went back and found the minutes for the last three years of the other Arts Commission that was meeting, and I'm just curious as to, looking at them, most of their meetings only lasted an hour, and seemed to be focused on one specific property in town. Why couldn't that commission just now pick up the ball for this? You know, it is an Arts Commission, their meetings can go, if their meetings are only going for an hour, if you add an hour on there, maybe this is something now that they can, can take and run with. Because I think until, you know, we, we don't have, we don't have a symphony orchestra in town, we don't have an acting troupe, we don't have an artist collaborative that I'm aware of. So, I think at this point, while maybe we would try to get those off the ground, let the commission that we have in place now handle that, and then see where that goes, and maybe address this again further down the road, once we, we have that up and running.
All right, thank you, Councilor Kowalski. Councilor Evans? Oh, okay, sorry. Councilor Snyder?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, in, in, I'm really concerned about setting up another commission and doing another ordinance and bringing in another, an Arts Commission, when, if you look at some of the other Arts Commissions and committees that we have in, I believe it's Vernon, and, and even in Ashford, these are all privately run, they're 501(c)(3)'s, they're privately run, people do, you know, like you have Friends of the Library, where people, you know, they, they have fundraisers, they raise money, and then they put on different types of, of shows. And we had, I'd have had extensive meetings and conversations with Ashford, who has probably one of the nicest Arts Commissions anywhere. They address all different phases of the arts, but primarily visual and, and, and music and different things like that. So, I'm just concerned about doing another committee, or a commission, and then writing another ordinance. Now, we're paying to have an ordinance written, probably, and the town attorney to review it, and then with the new commission comes funding, and money would have to come from the town to go in, just like all boards and commissions do have a, even though it may be minimal, a lot of them have a minimal amount of funding. But now, we have to fund this, and, you know, I just think it would be more logical, and, Mr. Mayor, we're on that Arts and Agriculture, Agriculture, Arts and Natural Committee, that Swan Committee, I guess, is the quick way to say it. And, and I, I do agree with, with Councilor Kowalski, it's, you know, and I've been saying this for probably several months, but we do have committees and commissions that are doing great jobs, and there was a big thing originally with the, the Swan Committee, was to get an Arts Council going. You remember that, Andy, when we first started, when Seal was with us?
Yes, but then that was put aside.
Right, right, because we real, there was no real demand for it at the time. Other than what I've had, there was a couple of artists in town that I worked with on the, that Arts Committee back in 2019, and they're looking to get spa- a space area, and I know I talked to the town manager about it as well, finding, being able to have, find a studio or a location where they can, you know, maybe a big room, or an area, or warehouse, where they can rent piece, you know, areas to be able to do their artwork together, you know, at the site, and not in their own homes, and then have shows. I just, you know, I'm just really leery about setting up another commission and more funding, and I'm not saying that we don't need it, but I just think it could be effective if it was a privately, private group such as Friends of the Library is, and have them do fundraising and, and really focus in on what they think this town, what's needed. As far as, you know, I just, I just don't think we should be spending the time and the energy, again, to do something like this, when we have one that's already in effect, and there's areas where it could fall under now. So, you know, I'm still thinking about it, and, and that's great, but right now, I'm just not looking real positive about having to have the town put together another ordinance and another commission and fund it, and let's see where we go. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilor Snyder. Any other comments? Councilor King?
So, the, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only question I have for the councilors is, we've been talking about it, can you, can we bring these individuals who have been doing this work three, 20 years ago and say, "What have you been doing?" Because I'm one of those individuals that says, "The proof's in the pudding." And at least to my eyes, the only one that's put up any signs recently of anything of any artistic nature is the town manager. And so, if these people have been doing it, which I'm sure that they have been, where is it? So, can we bring those individuals, so that we're not just talking amongst ourselves about who's doing what, when they've done it, how they've done it? What have you done? Do you wanna keep doing it? Because that's the other thing, right? They may have done it in the past, which is awesome, but do they wanna keep doing it? Let them speak for themselves, present it to us, 'cause I love a 501(c)(3), 'cause that saves me money. But, you know, but if they don't want to, you know, we have people that have a passion that want to do it, then maybe that could be where we find that happy medium. So, as, as opposed to us going back and forth over this about what has been done in the past, I mean, you had to go back into minutes. Let's bring those people out here and just call them up and say, "Hey, could you speak to us face to face and say what you'd like to do, what you've seen, and would you like to continue doing this?" 'Cause for all we know, they might say, "Pff, I'm done." So, no, let's not speak for them.
All right, thank you, Councilor King. Any other comments? Councilman Neely?
My, my question would be, and maybe this'll come out, like in September, once we have something like, you know, written down, what, what's, what's the difference between the, the commission and the committee that, the Arts Committee that we already have established for in so long? So, what's the big push to get a, a commission going? I guess that's what I'm really wondering, what the, you know, why, why start a commission when we already have a lot of Arts Committees that are either active or inactive, to, to Mr. King's point? So, but to, you know, to make a commission, that, that's, that's a commitment. So, are there people who are willing to form that, I would say, and, and make, make the commission happen? Or is it just to form a commission for the sake of, like, I'm looking for the, you know, your, the mission statement, and maybe that, like I said, it'll come out in September, but I was just wondering if we could get like a sneak preview, so I could like kind of wrap myself around the formation of a commission versus the committee? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilman Neely. Councilor Evans?
So, for me, the, the commission stands to, like as Councilman Neely said, it does, it's a commitment, I think, and that's a really key word, that the town is committing to the arts, that we want to foster the arts within our community and put that investment in. I also look at towns like West Hartford, where they have paintings throughout the town that were done by their town's Art Commission. Even if you, I hadn't realized it was a town thing, but they have the barriers around their outdoor restaurants, and that was actually encouraged and fostered by the Arts Commission to include those painted barriers, just to add some more art to the community. You look to Manchester, where they had murals painted on the buildings by local artists, other towns such as Bloomfield, who's developing their Arts Commission, and Windsor. So, to me, it is just to encourage and foster and make that commitment to the arts, whether it's the Arts Festival, whether it's working towards an outdoor stadium. It's also a way for the town to encourage art on town property, and it gives us that avenue to make that happen.
All right, thank you, Councilor Evans. I just wanna ask- All right, thank you, Councilor Evans. I just want to ask, and this kind of gets both of your points together. I think that, I'm assuming that sometime in August, we would probably get that rough draft, so we can be reading and reviewing it before we get to the September meeting. Is that fair to say?
Yes, there's a very rough draft in existence. It's a lot of thoughts kind of jumbled together that really needs some work and some narrowing. So I think we slowly started to work through that. I know the town manager was extremely busy with multiple storms coming in. So I think hopefully August will be a little quieter, and we won't have as much rain and storms, and we can really work through that and have something for the council to review prior to our September meeting.
Great, okay, thank you. And to Councilor King's point, I think at some point then in September, we could invite some of those arts groups here to participate in that discussion. Okay, thank you. Councilor Kobowski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also, I agree, I like Councilor King's recommendation, because looking at the minutes and seeing that there was very little discussion regarding any arts, I'm curious as to know, why did that happen? Did they find that there wasn't an interest? Was they, were they focusing on a totally different area and forgetting that, you know, they were also an arts commission? So I think that would be a great idea, and we can ask them these questions, if they were in the room.
Okay, yes, thank you, Councilor Kobowski. Councilor Snyder?
Thank you. So it seems like we haven't voted on approving this commission. We haven't voted on any of that. So are we, who's writing up this, who's writing the draft, the rough draft of the ordinance? I'm just curious to know.
I have put together an idea of what it might look like, but ultimately, the town manager will have to kind of work through it.
Yeah, I'm just wondering.
Yeah, I was, I was sent a rough draft to look at and comment back on, so that's what I did this morning.
Okay, so we're expending, so you're doing, you're spending time doing that, and apparently we'll have to go to our town attorney, right?
Before any ordinance is approved, it does need approval from the town attorney.
So we don't even know if we, we haven't even approved it yet, and we're already doing all these, taking all these actions. So there's costs involved with it already, right?
Well, outside of the couple hours I spent on it this morning, there hasn't been any time.
Okay. So would you send it to, I guess, I think if I remember the process right, you would, after you take a look at it and review it, you would apparently go, deal back with, Councilor Evans, who's working with you on this?
I'm happy to share it with anyone who would like to look at it. It was, I was pulled a lot of it.
No, I mean, who's helping you get together this art commission?
At this point, it was me just drafting something to get us started.
Okay.
I didn't want to create a subcommittee to create the ordinance. I was trying to avoid that by getting some ideas together to try to get things going.
But my concern is that one councillor is going forward with, putting drafting up an ordinance and a commission where the council hasn't even approved it yet.
No, Councilor Snyder.
I mean, the thought or the idea.
She's drafting up a rough copy of a potential ordinance for us to see and review before we approve anything. It's not going anywhere else, until we have all discussed it.
Well, I just want to be sure that we're not spending any too much time, I mean, the town manager's got a lot of stuff to do, but especially on the legal side of it. I mean, we would look at it before it goes to the town attorney, right?
Right.
Yeah, definitely.
It's not going anywhere until we have all discussed it as a group.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're not expending a lot of town staff on it from idea from one councillor. Not, I mean, even if it was just me and nobody else supporting, you know, at this point in time, there was no, I don't care which councillor it is, but we just want to be sure that, I want to be sure that we're not expending a lot of staff time and administrative time doing something that we haven't approved as a council yet. Not that we won't or not that we will, it's just at this point in time.
Correct.
Okay, all right, that's good. Just wanted to know. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Snyder. Councilor Evans?
To that point, would we like to try to get a consensus of if councillors would like to continue to move forward with pursuing an arts commission? I mean, I don't know if we want to.
Consensus, yeah. Can we get a consensus of that it's okay to move forward, finish the rough draft, get it back to us by September? So we can review, yeah. Okay. Consensus of going forward? In other words, with the rough draft evaluation, inviting the groups in, and then in September, looking at what the language might be if we do an ordinance?
I think I'd like to hear from the group before we move forward with it, because I'm very interested to hear what they would have to say.
Right, but, but we can do it in that order, but are you comfortable with, the consensus I'm looking for is, should we just continue with the rough draft so we have something to review in September? Just shake your head, yes or no, that would be fine.
Yes, yes.
Yes, okay. Councilor Leidecker?
I guess I'm confused. If this is something Councilor Evans wants to put together, we don't have the option to say no. So I understand that Councilor Snyder may not wish to move forward with an arts commission, but nobody can prevent Councilor Evans from putting together a rough draft of something that she wishes to send to us. So I don't think we need a consensus. I mean, I would absolutely support her in doing this. I don't think you could ever have too many arts. I mean, we're always talking about losing the arts in the school. This is a fabulous idea. But we, as a council, can't say, no, you can't do this. So I think consensus or not, she can move forward with putting something together.
Point well taken. Thank you, Councilor Leidecker. Councilor King?
Yeah, I just want to follow, just, because I might be just naive to this whole thing. I look at this as an idea. And so from that perspective, I'm like, come up with your idea, put it together, let's put a pin in it. You're going to put it together in August. We're going to see it in August. Then we make a decision in September. I mean, that's how I look at it, as an idea, as opposed to, especially if the town manager's not involved, and then we can send it to him after that. Because it sounds like that's really the, kind of the point of contention, is him not focusing on something else and his staff. But if this is an idea, again, how I'm looking at it, you're putting it together. The fact that we have it on the agenda kind of makes it more whatever. But if it's an idea, August, we're all presented with it. September, we make a decision. Then it goes to the town manager if we decide to move forward with it, and then we just kind of go from there. That's my perception of it. So we'll agree with that, because I would agree with that with anybody. If you got an idea, roll with it. Let's make it happen until we give it to the people that we're actually paying to do all this other stuff.
All right, thank you, Councilor King. I think, Councilor Snyder?
Yeah, just, just close up saying, my, I don't have a problem with any councillor bringing forth an idea if they're doing the work on it. I mean, at all. My point is, I don't want to spend administrative and staff time and legal time on something that there may not be a huge consensus for. Do you know what I mean? It's like, I can have any idea. Like, I don't want every line in town painted, every street line painted purple. Well, am I going to have the public works department spend hours and figure all this stuff out? You know, so, yes, as long as I know that we're not expending a lot of administrative and staff time and legal time, and then we'll just see what Councilor Evans brings forth in August, that's great. I'm fine with that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilor Snyder. I think that's where we're at. So that's fair enough. Okay, good.
Just, just real quick, I just wanted to say that, from my perspective, having the opportunity to put input in on the front end is sometimes helpful, because oftentimes, if something gets in front of all of you, you get the opportunity to work on that and talk about it. And there may be things in there from an administrative standpoint or from an operation standpoint that are just not possible, and implement some real challenges. And I don't want you to get married to a certain idea that might be in some, that might be in there that's not actually feasible to accomplish. So from my perspective, by putting that little bit of time in on the front end is more valuable on the back end, typically. So just, just so everybody kind of understands. And I'm more than happy to do that with any of all nine council members, so.
All right, thank you, Mr. Maniscalco. All right, I think we're ready to move on to the next item, and that is a discussion on the town, oh, no, I'm sorry, almost skipped one. The review of transparency, and I want to refer you to the attachment that the town manager just sent out tonight, in terms of that graph that we asked for last time that gives us a picture of what, what we've done in terms of government transparency. The graph, remember that? Okay, so this is Deputy Mayor Pendleton, Councilor Evans. Deputy Mayor, you care to start? Okay?
I'll defer to Councilor Evans.
All right, Councilor Evans?
All right, thank you. I really appreciate you putting this together. You know, it looks like we have some great readings here, a lot, complete, much ongoing. The in-progress as well, which is our town billboard, which is just truly in progress but coming. And then I did actually, for the opportunities to involve unaffiliated voters, which we have not started, I did want to mention, we have the Social Justice Racial Equity Commission, which we did make sure to include the opportunity for unaffiliated based on how the parties would nominate. So I felt like maybe we could actually change that to an in-progress, in my opinion. But I think it's important that for each of us to look at this, I'm hoping we can share this with the town. And I think maybe out of this, we might have other thoughts or recommendations for other ideas related to transparency to come out of this, if anyone has any thoughts.
All right, thank you, Councilor Evans. Questions, comments? Councilor King?
The only question I had, and this is, this is awesome, is, just for clarification standpoint, the town billboard, what is that?
So the town, the town applied for what's called a steep grant, which is a grant through the state. And we were successful in that application to implement a number of electronic billboards or signs throughout the community. The one that's currently being implemented is probably going to be the most prominent one outside of the EOC. If you drive by there right now, there's a bunch of sawhorses out there. You probably saw them putting some concrete foundation in. That will be an electronic sign that will be able to be programmed for, for example, for tonight. It would probably say before the, for today, that, you know, town council meeting tonight, starting at seven o'clock at the town hall, something to that effect. We're going to have a number of them. There will be another one up here by the town hall. And I think there's at least one other in town, if not two. One of the nice things about it is we'll be able to reprogram all of them with a couple hits of a button, and we could put out any other type of message that we need, whether it be an emergency message, or, hey, there's something going on tonight at the town hall that you want to pay attention to. So really, the signs that we reviewed are not, it's not like a bunch of light bulbs like you would see at a construction site. It's, they're very nice, very classy looking. And I think it'll get us away from using the sawhorses and plywood that typically we see when we have some other notices that go out. So I think we're kind of stepping up our game a little bit.
Like electronic recycling, for instance.
Yeah.
Right, so just for clarification, we're not talking about them signs. When you say billboard, we're not talking about billboards on the highway.
No.
Just for clarification, because somebody's going to ask that question, where are we putting it up?
No, Monopol.
But now that you mention it, Councilor King, I think a billboard would be nice.
No, abort, nope. And so the follow-up to that, and I think I heard you say it, this is, you apply for a grant and you received it. Okay, so that this is not money that's coming from the town, it's a grant that you apply for?
Yes, this is money that's coming from the state to fund it.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Councilor King. Thank you, Mr. Maniscalco. Councilman Neely?
Yes, sir. Thank you for the transparency report. I had a question. I was wondering, is this transparency report available to, like, is it on our website?
I believe it should be a part of the town, the packet for the town council, which is posted on the website.
So, and, and as easy as this is to read, when it's on the website, and I'm sorry, I didn't check. But is it, like, color-coded, like, see how easy this is, like, okay, this is done, this is almost done, this is in progress, this is not, haven't happened? So is it, is it just like I see it here?
It should be, although I can't say I've looked at it on the website either, so.
You're like, you know, or is it somewhere where instead of saying ranking, would it say, like, then complete or ongoing? Like, is it, is it, I'm trying to ask, let me try this again, because I messed, I messed that up. See how transparent this is? This is very clear and accurate information about different things. It's kind of showing the public that the things that we have done that are very transparent to the town. I just want to make sure that they understand that, yes, this is transparent and it's completed. You said you were going to do this, and it's got, it got done. This is in progress. Is the status, that's the word, is the status of each one of these items listed also on the website, if not color-coded?
Alls I can tell you is, the town manager's report gets put on the website, and this should be with it. I don't, I'm not in charge of this.
So we're going to see just the way it is here on the website?
I think your fear is, is it color-coded? Is that it?
Yeah, that's what.
Is it a color scan online? I think it is.
Go look.
Yeah.
I'm the only one who hasn't checked.
Yeah, you're not the only one.
You're not the only one, it's right.
I just, I just want, I just, I think this is very impressive, just very clear, concise, and very transparent, so to say. So I would just like to bring that forth. And I have another question. Sometimes it may not appear that things are being done transparently. And that's because a lot of things that the councillors are aware of, and you and assistant town managers and our attorney, some of that stuff gets done, like, in executive session. So even though it may not seem to the public that it's being transparent, basically, the councillors are aware of what's going on. There seems to be a breakthrough. Sometimes people don't think that we're being as direct, but there's some things that we just can't be upfront about until it's actually completed, until it becomes green, you know? So, and that's why I really want people to understand. So when they use that we're in transparency, we're being as open and honest as we can. And I think that needs to be said.
All right, thank you, Councilman Neely. Deputy Mayor Pendleton. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Roberts, if you could answer a question for number nine, instructional video to explain how residents can get involved. And, excuse me, and do we have one IT person assigned to our website on the town's website, or do we have multiple people?
I can answer both of those. So in terms of the instructional video, I mean, if somebody has an idea that they'd like to put a video together, the town does have the equipment and the staffing that we could put towards putting that together to help promote people's participation in different boards, commissions, and other volunteer activities. But somebody would need to probably put together the script and that sort of stuff. In terms of the town website, individual pages are updated by individual departments. And then overall, the IT staff does help in the creation of some pages and other things. And they do jump in and help, but I can't say that it's one person managing the website. I think the one thing people don't realize about municipal websites is there are thousands of webpages associated with a municipal website. There's a whole lot more than I think everybody recognizes.
Right. I think I'm going to try to follow Councilman Neely's comments about posting the transparency report. And I'm not sure if she's paying attention, because they're chatting over there. But what I'm going to try to follow here is, under the, not the government piece, but under the town piece and with the staff, is there a place to put this on how our town is doing under the town item on our website? Because I know there's a government piece, but then there's like a staff piece. Maybe it can fall under the town manager's, excuse me, section of your department, or completion, or just for the town piece of things. I think that this should be displayed as the town progresses towards that transparency, and not just showing up in your town manager's report, but as a statement, or a blog, or a something, a posting that says what's new, or what's happening, or something like that.
I certainly can add it as an attachment to the town manager's page. That's easy.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Counselor Lopez, I'll get right back. Counselor Lopez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Town Manager, for these dashboards. Pretty good, but I have a couple of questions. Does the green become blue at one point? So once completed, then it becomes an ongoing thing, or is the vice versa?
So some of the items on there, when I was reviewing it, because this was done prior to myself getting here, some of them were continual things that needed continuous work and updating on. And so it coded those blue because they were different than the ones that were complete, that had finality to them. So the green ones are final, have a final thing to it. So for example, like, the sign is a great example, that once that's installed, that's complete. There's no in-progress and ongoing, it's just done. Whereas some items, so like the monthly email blast, that has to continuously be worked on and ongoing every month. So they're both good, but they're different, I think is the way to say it.
Thanks. And my other question has to do with, who decides? Thanks. My other question has to do with, who decides when something is enough? In other words, when is the increase in social media presence enough? Is it enough just to be on Twitter, or Facebook, or if there is another site that comes up, like hypothetically speaking, TikTok?
Well, I could start doing TikToks for you if you want, but I don't know if you're going to like it.
But who decides? Where does it stop, or how does it continue?
Well, you know, I think one of the things we talk about is how effective our methods are. So, you know, I think when we look at, you know, Facebook certainly hits a certain group of individuals, whereas Twitter, it talks to a certain group of individuals. If we need to start using some other platform because we're missing some part of the community, we certainly would start working on that. And maybe, you know, just like their trends with everything else with social media, all of a sudden, Facebook is no longer the thing to do and has gone the way of MySpace, then we just let that go and go somewhere else. So, yeah.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Counselor Lopez. Counselor Meneely?
Okay. I was just checking the website, you know, because that's why I was trying to look at Ms. Snyder's thing. It's not on there. So that's what I was doing, Ms. Pendleton. I was checking the website, and it's not on there. And I think it's a nice, clear-cut, transparent document. So I would, even if we take a snapshot of it and put it on there, that'd be, you know, that's what I'm talking about. Because, you know, the conversation is supposed to be about transparency. And so I know the town manager is being transparent, but that's because I'm like right here, one of the nine. So if we could get that up there, you know.
Definitely, but we'll get it up there.
You know, that would be great. Thank you very much. That's all. I was paying attention, though.
Thank you, Councilor Meneely. I do have a question, Mr. Maniscalco. Two, actually. One is, in terms of Facebook, it seems that, I don't know, if there's one person coordinating Facebook postings, for instance? Because it just seems that we're a little bit behind when it comes to posting on Facebook of what's going on in town. And I wonder if there's a way, if we had one person doing that, it could be, postings can be made more frequently. It could be more relevant to what's happening right now, and not something that happened three days ago. I think when you don't have one person doing that, that's what you lose. So I'm not sure what the system is. That's one. Go ahead. Sorry.
Okay. So each of our departments has their own Facebook that they're trying to use individually. Then there is a main town Facebook. I think that's managed probably through the IT department.
Right.
If that's not up to date, we can certainly take a look at that and see what we can do to.
This is just me personally.
Make it a little more relevant.
When you have different departments with Facebook pages, then the town government page doesn't get all the up-to-date information to post, because they're doing it on their own page. Mr. Roberts?
As with every technology, departments embrace it at different levels. So when we first started out, we created a town Facebook account so that we had one place to post. Then over the last six or seven years, every department has said, oh, well, we'd like to have our own. So we have Public Works, we have the Police Department, we have the Teen Center, we have Human Services, we have Adult and Senior Services. So everybody creates their own. We've always asked if at best, they could share it with the town page as a central repository. Human nature being that, what it is, people don't always do that.
They're not doing that, right?
So whenever we can, we try to get it shared with the town page. When it's shared with the town page, it's available. Recently, we had heard that a lot of people didn't have Twitter, and the manager has a Twitter account, and he tweets. So we found a way to link that. So as soon as he tweets, it does automatically post to Facebook. So we are working on ways to improve it. It just takes everybody rowing in the same direction. So if we can get all the other departments to share their posts, and we do typically, when you see major issues and major events that are going on, the Police Department, the Fire Department, everybody will share their information with the town page, and that's how we get it going. But if there is information that people want us to share, please send it to us, and as soon as we get it, we will post it. It will go up. But we don't know what people want to know unless it's sent to us. Very much like videos. We're more than willing to participate and produce videos to get people more involved. But we do need to know what people want to talk about and what they want to be involved with. So there is a place on the G Media website for you to submit a video idea. Just, we need to get them to be able to work on them.
I guess my concern is if I'm a resident in town and I'm trying to get better informed about what's going on in town, I may not know that Human Services has their own Facebook page. So I go to the South Windsor Town Government page, I want to know what's going on in town. I may not know about those other.
The other thing you can do is, when you go onto Facebook, search "South Windsor, Connecticut." All the pages associated with South Windsor come up, those that are government-related and those that are not. Then you can actually ask to be following them, you know? You can follow them like Instagram, Twitter. So you'll have to find out what's out there. Certainly, we can post, a new post tomorrow, saying, hey, if you don't know that all these pages exist, go check them out. But again, if other departments create their own page, that's why they want it. They wanted a very specific, tailored page. I mean, most schools, even here in South Windsor, all the elementary schools have their own Facebook page. The middle school, there's not one Board of Ed Facebook page, although there is a Board of Ed Administration. So, you know, if you look, you will find them.
And I'm fine with what you're saying, but I just think that the departments should be held to some standard that says you will share with the town government page, so it will be up there, you know? Right? Just let them know, they just have to share. Right?
We will look into a way to coordinate it better.
Okay. All right. I'm just looking at it from the point of view of how do people get information? And if they go to the town government page, they're not getting all the information. All right. Thank you, Mr. Roberts. I really appreciate it.
And if you want the most updated information, follow me on Twitter.
Follow Twitter.
Or Facebook, since we have media.
I knew that was coming.
I can.
So my other question is, and this is for either of you, but I remember at one time, our group talked about the idea of agendas and minutes updated on the website. So I'm wondering, and I think at the time, the problem was that so many different, whether it's a board or commission, they were relying on different sources to get those website updates happening. Is that now, maybe Ms. Reed can help us too, is that now better coordinated with the groups? I know you were having problems getting information from people. So is that? I'd like that to be a green, I guess is what I'm saying.
I think there's everything up there. It's hard to, I can't constantly go and check on everybody.
No, I don't want you to. I'm just saying, are people living up to their responsibility in getting it to you? That's all.
For the most part.
Okay. All right. Great. That's all I need. Thank you.
I would say, I had my administrative assistant go through all the boards and commissions to look at the agendas and minutes that were posted. And I think for the most part, everything was up to date. Except for a couple boards that either they hadn't met for a really long time, just because of the pandemic. And there was no time slots available for them to meet. Or there were, there was, I think, one, and it was due to some staffing issues. But for the most part, we were doing pretty good.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, I think the report is great, so thank you both. Thank you, Ms. Reed. Any other comments or questions about this topic? Deputy Mayor? All right. We'll go on to item D, our proposed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to suspend the rules and move item 12B after 13F. That will allow us to get the town business done before this long discussion item.
Okay. Thirteen, after thirteen F, right?
Yes.
All right. A motion's been made and seconded to suspend the rules and move this discussion on town council rules to thirteen F. Oh, after thirteen F, I'm sorry. Yes?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor of that change? Aye. Any opposed now? All right. Thank you. So we are on item 13B. Counselor Evans?
Resolution authorizing referendum on the sale of a certain parcel of property known as Lot 2 and located at 725 Sullivan Avenue, South Windsor. Be it resolved that the resolution entitled "Resolution Authorizing the Sale of a Certain Parcel of Property Known as Lot 2 and Located at 725 Sullivan Avenue" here to fore, at this meeting adopted, be submitted to the town electors for approval or disapproval at a referendum to be held in conjunction with the general election on November 2nd, 2021. And that the warning of said referendum state the question to be voted on as follows. Shall the resolution entitled "Resolution Authorizing the Sale of a Certain Parcel of Property Known as Lot 2 and Located at 725 Sullivan Avenue, South Windsor" to JPRE Holdings LLC for the sum of $265,000, $265,000, adopted by the town council on July 19, 2021, be approved? The ballot label for said question shall read as follows. Shall the resolution authorizing the sale of a certain parcel of property known as Lot 2 and located at 725 Sullivan Avenue, South Windsor to JPRE Holdings LLC for $265,000, $265,000, be approved? Yes, no? The warning of said referendum shall state that the full text of said resolution is on file and open to public inspection in the office of the town clerk.
All right. Is there a second? All right. Motion's been made and seconded. We'll open for discussion. Any questions, comments? Any need for clarification? Mr. Maniscalco? Yes, Counselor Snyder?
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mr. Mayor, yeah. So there's a couple questions I just want to clarify with this piece of property. This was, do you remember when we purchased this? Are we thinking like 2002 or something? I know I.
I could tell you, give me five seconds.
Hold, please.
Oh, maybe not. I'm sorry. No, I don't know. I think it was around 2000 and something, 2002, that timeframe.
Yeah, that's the time that I can recall. So this piece of land was purchased, I just want to, this piece of land was purchased to build a firehouse, because the firehouse, this is a group, this, this 725 Sullivan Avenue is a piece of several pieces that were purchased in a chunk of land because we could not build the new firehouse, the new required firehouse at the old, at the old place up on Sullivan Avenue near Route 5. Because there was sedge grass, or there was.
Yeah, I believe it was sedge grass. And this was, this was one parcel in a group of multiple that were purchased altogether with the intention of building a firehouse in that general area.
Correct. But the entire lot, the entire, all, the entire piece that was purchased was not, was not required for the, for the firehouse. We just, that piece on West Road for easy, you know, egress and entrance, and that's where we built the firehouse. So another piece of land, several years ago, was purchased by the Connecticut Valley Brewing Company, or whoever owns that. And that's where the Connecticut Valley Brewery is. So there's just one chunk of land that's left. Now, this is, the town owns this, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And how big is it approximately?
I think it's like two and a half acres, something like that.
Something like that, right? Two and a half acres. Okay. So the intent, from what I understand and what I remember, because I recall it, is that the point was to use, buy this piece of property, which was quite expensive, and build a firehouse, and sell the rest of it off, because it's really prime real estate on Sullivan Avenue. It's really good for that. So nothing's been done with it for all these years, probably greater than 15 years, maybe 16 years, okay? Or maybe more than that. And now, somebody has approached the town to say, listen, I want to buy this. So we're not, we're not buying this land, we're selling this land to try to recoup some of that money that was spent.
Yes.
Correct. And actually.
I just want to make sure this is very clear.
Yeah, so it was purchased approximately 2009.
Oh, 2009, okay.
Yeah, so it was purchased in approximately 2009. And in that process, I think it's important to note that the additional or excess property that was not used to create the firehouse was identified for economic development purposes. As you could see, was done with the brewery. And then, as is being recommended for 725, correct. And there is one other additional piece in that location adjacent to the brewery in the rear of the brewery.
Okay. And we don't know anything about, it's a small piece, isn't it?
It's small. It has some wetlands, but it is, have some usable space as well.
Okay, so maybe the brewery may be interested.
One day, that could potentially be another conversation.
That would be another conversation. So a developer contacted the town and said, I'm interested in this piece of property, I want to buy it. The town went ahead and did an appraisal. Right? Because that's what we always, always pay you to do. And the appraisal was the $265,000 for this two, two and a half.
That is the appraised value for that piece of property.
That's the appraised value. And this company who's purchasing it has no problems with paying that full amount.
They have agreed through a purchase and sale agreement to pay $265,000.
Okay. So currently, on this two, two and a half acres, we're collecting how much money in taxes?
Currently, none.
Zero, because the town owns it. So let's, we sell this piece of land, somebody's approached us, we say, okay. It meets within the, went to planning and zoning. Planning and zoning approved it, the 824 saying yes. Based on what they want to put in there, and traffic, and all those other kind of things that they're required to do. It fits, it fits, and it's a good fit. So P and Z did in fact approve it to go forward. We have the letter, I think, in our packet tonight.
In our packet, right.
Yep. So next, so now I'm going to ask you, as best as you can, how much tax, how many, what's the value of tax revenue in that land as it sits with nothing on it, with somebody owning it?
It's about $8,800 in taxes a year.
Okay, so we would go from eight thousand, from zero to like $8,000 a year. Now, it's the proposed plan is a, do we, we know what it is, right?
I'm sorry, say the last word.
We know what the building is supposed to be?
Correct. So as a part of, when we were contacted, you know, of course, we said, well, what are you interested in doing there? So they've proposed, it's a medical office building where there would be some rehabilitation activities occurring, as well as some office space.
Okay. All right. So considering that an office building gets built there, you know the size of the property, based on the parking needs and everything else, are we, what would you estimate, and I believe you spoke to the tax?
Yes, I did talk with the assessor today about it, and it's a little bit challenging to come up with without seeing the actual plans in front of us. But in terms of an approximate, we're estimating it's about $120,000.
Okay, so we'd be going from zero to $120,000 on a piece of property that planning and zoning already approved and said it was okay. From its original intent to use for economic development, it's prime real estate. And as I understand, we have heard from a couple of firefighters that it may be, they won't want to keep it and just use it as a piece, keep it an empty vacant land to use for exercises if they need it. So I, you know, I've also heard that there's a big chunk of land behind Firehouse Company 1 that they were planning to use, you know, that they can use for any kind of exercises. And then there's also the Barton property, the fairgrounds, the John Mitchell Fairgrounds on Brookfield Street? I think it's Brookfield Street. Yeah, that could also be used. So I just wanted to make sure that it's perfectly clear that we didn't, this isn't a bidding piece of activity, because we're selling the land. Towns don't just have land and hire realtors and pay 6% to sell their land. If somebody approaches the town, you know, nobody for 12 years, 12 years, right?
12 years, right. 12 years.
Since 2009.
12 years, doing nothing.
So 12 years, nobody has knocked on our door to buy it, or there's been no interest in it. And now there was, and this company, this developer approached us. Okay. All right. I just want to make sure that, you know, from zero piece, zero cost of taxes coming in to maybe $120,000, I'm going to round that down, be a little bit more conservative, $120,000 a year in taxes, you know, over 10 years, it's 1.2 million. So, you know, based on the fact that this is the original intent of everything that happened as I just went through, so everybody kind of has a little snippet of history, and you can go back and look in the records and see everything that I just said. So, okay, I just wanted to make sure that this was a good fit, planning and zoning has approved it.
Correct.
And we're moving forward to say, this is another stream of tax revenue coming in.
Correct, and remember, your 1.2 million doesn't include personal property.
Okay, so that's, so that's my next question.
Which in a, office building could be significant, and we won't know that yet.
Yeah, so personal property, right, so personal property is, let's say they put x-ray machines, or whatever, or something in there. We tax them for that, right?
Correct.
Now Hartford Health, Hartford Healthcare across the street from here, right, I mean, they have all those kind of medical equipment in there. So, they have to pay on that, I mean, we don't have an estimate of what that could be.
I don't have that on the end.
We have no way, yeah, we don't know. Okay, I'm sorry I took so long, but I just wanted to kind of run through the history, because there was a lot of questions that, that this wasn't discussed, and, and all the, but somebody who comes and approaches you, and things are done in executive session that can't be, can't be talked about. So, you know, now it's moving forward, and it's a public information, so, um, thank you, and thank you for your patience, councilors, thank you for your patience.
Right, and Counselor Snyder, I think that's an important part of your discussion, that the details were only in executive session, so we couldn't be discussing this prior to tonight, yes. But, yeah, think about 12 years of zero taxes. So, it sat there for 12 years, we collected zero taxes on it, when the original intent was for economic development. So, thank you for the clarification, I appreciate it.
Yes, absolutely, that was important.
Counselor Meneely.
That was a nice history, Ms. Snyder. My, 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 my point is, I just want to ask a question, um, so there, there was this big parcel of land, like she explained, and then it was, you know, set aside, fire department, the brewery, and then it's like a little piece, and then another little piece. Now, there's no like, um, signage of any kind on those pieces of properties, like, um, how would the average person know that there's a piece of property that is not being used, or is, is there a way, and is there any, is there any violation of like, not, like, um, announcing that there's a piece of property that's like, you know, like out there, like, I mean, we, we all know that there was no prop- well, not everybody, well, we now know that there was a piece of property there that, um, had the intent of, you know, being used for economic development, but did anybody, like, any regular resident, or any regular developer, that was like, say, driving by Sullivan Avenue or West Road, would they have any way of knowing that there was a piece of land, of prime real estate, as she says, available to be sold?
So, we were not advertising it for sale?
So, we were not advertising it, and we don't have to if we don't want to, right?
No, we don't have to.
And that's, there's nothing sneaky about that?
Nope.
You don't have to announce anything like that, do you?
No.
Okay, so somebody approached you-
That being said, I, I would say that if you go onto our GIS map, which I'm sure a lot of developers are very adept at, and they get on, and you look for vacant parcels, because I've done this myself, being somebody who's trying to figure out ways to do economic development, you can find vacant parcels, you could look at their property card, and you can identify who owns it, and, and get all the contact information for those individuals. So, it's not very hard, if you're, if you're looking for a location to do some type of development with a certain sized building that you have an idea about on a main route in, in the community, you can very quickly and easily identify where to pick a spot, and who owns it.
But you weren't actively looking for somebody to buy that?
We were not, no.
Okay.
We were not marketing the property at all.
Somebody came to you, or somebody came to town, not you as such, I, I just say you, because you're the guy right there.
So, we, we received a letter in my office, uh, inquiring if we'd be interested in, in selling it, and that's the letter I brought to all of you, to show all of you that, that interest, and, uh, find out if there was interest from your side to move forward.
Okay, thank you, I just need to, I'll clear it up, that was like one extra piece, I wasn't sure, everybody all knew that, all right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Meneely. Any other questions, comments? Mr. Maniscalco, anything else to add? You all set?
It's up.
Okay. If there are no other comments, we'll go on to voting. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
No, I'm here, I'm sorry.
All right, was that a no? I'm sorry, okay. Um, roll call vote, Ms. Reed?
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor King?
Yes.
Counselor Snyder?
Yes.
Counselor Leidecker?
Yes.
Counselor Meneely?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Pendleton?
Yes.
Counselor Kobowski?
No.
Counselor Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Paterno?
Yes. All right, motion is passed. Eight to one, we'll go on, thank you, we'll go on to the next item. Item C, Counselor King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution authorizing the town manager to sign and execute all necessary agreements with ICMA Retirement Corporation. Whereas the town of South Windsor is the named employer sponsored for five separate deferred compensation plans with ICMA for employees of the town, and whereas the name authorized plan coordinator is the former town manager, Matthew B. Galligan, and should be updated to the current town manager, Michael Maniscalco. Oh goodness, there's more. Thought I got out with that just a little bit. Now therefore, be it resolved that, of course, Michael Maniscalco, town manager for the town of South Windsor, so be the coordinator for each plan, shall receive reports, notices, et cetera, from ICMA Retirement Corporation or Vantus Trust, shall cast on behalf of the employer any required votes under Vantus Trust, and may delegate any administrative duties relating to the plan to appropriate departments, and be it further resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby authorizes the town manager to sign and execute all necessary agreements with ICMA Retirement Corporation incidental to the administration of the plan.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any questions, comments on the resolution? If not, Counselor King, do you have a question? Okay. If not, we'll go on to voting. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Thank you. 13D, Counselor Snyder.
No, Counselor.
Oh, sorry, D.
Thank you. Um, item 13D, resolution approving a transfer of $45,000 from the fiscal year 2021 Building Utilities account to the Library Carpet Replacement Capital Account. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby approves a transfer of $45,000 from the fiscal year 2021 Building Utilities account to the Library Carpet Replacement Capital Account to cover costs for additional carpeting for the lower level at the South Windsor Public Library.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Questions about this, or comments, Counselor Snyder?
Thank you, Mr. Maniscalco, and Clay Major.
Any other questions? This completes the project, I'm assuming, that's what this is doing?
What this will allow us to do is purchase the, uh, extra carpet that's needed, so it'll match, uh, with the rest of the carpet, but it won't be installed, um, that'll be at a later time.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? If not, we'll go on to voting. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Thank you. Motion carries 13E, Counselor Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. 13E, resolution waiving the competitive bidding process for DNR Laboratories. Whereas the town of South Windsor Information Technology Department's two primary media servers responsible for the recording and broadcasting of public meetings will no longer be supported and need to be replaced due to their age as of September 12, 2021. And whereas the current servers, as well as all of the other G Media equipment, were installed, programmed, and have been supported by DNR Laboratories, LLC. And whereas, given the specialized nature of complexity of the town's AV setup, DNR's firsthand knowledge of this setup, the fact that the new equipment will need to seamlessly integrate with the town's current setup that DNR configured, and DNR has already quartered the project, it is felt that it will be in the town's best interest to waive competitive bidding. Now therefore, be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby waives the competitive bidding process.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Questions, Counselor Lopez?
Yeah, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I, I just have one question. When I read, uh, whereas given the specialized nature and complexity of the town's AV setup, but nowadays, AV setups are not specialized and complex, so I was just wondering, how does this company keep up with technology?
I'm going to have Mr. Roberts go in the hot seat for that one. I, I will say, our, our AV setup is probably not brand new, so it may be one of the older versions, which was specialized, so.
The technology itself's not unique. The configuration and the way it's set up to run this room, to run a hybrid meeting, to run downstairs with the extra camera and everything like that, all the individual programming is unique. So, for us to go out and get a bid from four contractors on the uniqueness of how our systems put together would be very difficult, very much like our dispatch center open in the police department. We use a vendor, they've been with us for over 10 years, all the uniqueness that we built into the system is what makes it unique, and makes it difficult to get another contractor to compare apples to apples to apples. That's why, I think this is the third time we've come to the council to waive competitive bidding on the DNR system itself. Matter of fact, maybe five years ago, council kept doing this for the automation of our door lock system, and everything else with Clay Major, and you actually went ahead and passed a, a resolution allowing us to actually work one specific vendor to provide that service, so that we didn't have to keep coming back to waive competitive bidding. Hope that answers it.
I want to make sure that our company will look nice, necessarily, to help our company along.
No, I understand, and, and we work really close with this company, and, and we check all the parts and prices, we compare, it's really their labor that we're working with, which is very unique, because they've built this system with us over the last five or six years.
Great, thank you, Counselor Lopez. Counselor King?
I, I just want to concur with Counsel Lopez, just from the standpoint of, I'd be remiss if I didn't say that we don't want to stifle any small business, just because one company decides they want to put one chip, which all of a sudden suggests that we're the only ones that know where this chip is, that if you don't want to use us, then, you know, we'll take our chip back.
Right. Just to clarify, all the equipment is standard equipment that you buy from any vendor out there. The small company, DNR Laboratories, is a local vendor that does the programming, configuration, and setup. So, that's the company that we're looking to use their specific services. So, it's, we're not actually going to waive competitive bidding on equipment. The equipment, you know, if we can get it for five or six different vendors, that's what we get. So, we always shop that around. Trust me, we try to use every penny we have.
All right, thank you, Counselor King, thank you, Mr. Roberts. Any other questions? Counselor Meneely?
Um, thank you again, I'm, like, like, um, Mrs. Sesar, um, Mr. Lopez, and Mr. King, I had the same issue, because, you know, why, it seems like we just kept, keep wavering competitive bidding, but you're really not wavering competitive bidding, you're just kind of like, you don't want to start from scratch, and, and start all over again, for, this is like, one, this is one big project, it's just been chunked up into different, different parcels again, and so, it, this is a continuation of the same project, changing everything over to, so it's all compatible with each other.
Right.
We're not really eliminating, you know, somebody who could come up with a better deal, um, this person knows our system, and has been working with our system, that's the only thing, you're not, you're not trying to, you know, out, you know, you're, you're not trying to like, negate anybody else who wants to try and, and come in on this, it just, you know, I, I do have a problem with the whole, and I, I've told the town manager, I've told my, my teammates here, that, you know, waiving competitive bidding just seems not right, but, but that's not really what you're doing. I, I hope they could change the wording, but they said no, um, because that's what it's called, it's called waiving competitive bidding. I just wish they would come up with a better way, but when they described it like, you know, making a recipe, and then like, when somebody else would come in, like, oh, I have to start all over again, as opposed to, this person, DNR, DNR just can, can continue working, but you have to, you have to word the resolution this way, just to make it official, but, I think you-
Right, it, it's very much like when you guys, you have a town attorney for a period of time on a contract, and has been working on maybe this massive project for the last two years, been in depth in all of that, and then you get a new town attorney. Typically, the practice is to let the previous town attorney finish it up, because if you transfer it all to the new attorney, they have to get up to speed, it's very complicated, sometimes that doesn't work. So, that's kind of what we're talking about here, we have a project that's been going on for multiple years, they have all the knowledge, and all we're asking is, we want to still be able to work with that vendor, because if not, if we go to another vendor, most likely it's going to cost a whole lot more money-
Right.
-to constantly bring up a new vendor up to speed all the time.
So, can you change the wording to say, to not say wavering competitive bidding process? Do you have to use those words?
I don't believe so.
I think we do have to use those words.
You have to use those words?
Yeah.
Well, then, then you're going to have to keep explaining it, because, you know, when somebody from the outside, like, reads our agenda and says, look, you're waiving competitive bidding again, you know, that's, that's just not being very transparent, or anything like that, you know?
If it's something you would be, uh, have the appetite for, we certainly could bring back another resolution after this, to kind of just set them as the vendor for this system.
That, that would be nice, you know, and then we could just keep on continuing.
That way, you don't have to keep doing it for-
Then we, then we, it doesn't look like we're, like, bypassing the system that we keep setting up. You know, I'm a teacher, I have rules, and it just-
We'll work on bringing something back to you for your September meeting.
Thank you, you know, because I'm sure the project's not done yet, I'm sure you, you know-
It's going to be an ongoing work of art.
Yeah, it'll probably never be done, because we're going to constantly be doing something new.
Find another, find another way of writing this out, right? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Counselor Meneely. Thank you, Mr. Roberts.
Thank you.
Mr. Maniscalco, I think that's what, oh, Counselor Snyder?
Yeah, Mr. Roberts, first one real quick question before you, you did. Um, so, did you kind of look at this as a, um, did you do a cost analysis? So, is the money, is the cost that DNR is giving you to install a fair market price? I mean, like, if it would cost, if you're, and your estimate is $3,000 to do the job, and this is a number, and this vendor's saying, okay, we're going to do it for $8,000, I mean, there, it's a fair mark, it's a fair cost analysis, you did a cost analysis on it, correct?
Yes, and, and when we first did this, when we did our first project, and then we saw the benefits of waiving competitive bidding, it's typically been less than half of what it would cost if we went out and brought somebody back up to speed, so-
Okay.
If this was a $2,000 job that we're bidding out, and DNR's going to get the work, if we went out with somebody brand new that came in and said, okay, I don't know your history, I got to go and analyze your system, got to figure out all it works, it's probably going to be $4,000.
Okay, so just as long as I know you did a cost analysis, and, uh, and it's fair, and that's great, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Snyder. Any other questions? All right, I think we're set, thank you, Mr. Roberts. Uh, I think we can go on to voting. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, our next item, 13G, I mean, 13F, Counselor Meneely.
13F. 13F, resolution approving the refund of taxes to four South Windsor taxpayers. Via BSA, the South Windsor Town Council hereby approves a refund of property taxes to four South Windsor taxpayers. The total of said refunds being $9,675.79, and as more fully described on attached Exhibit A.
Second.
All right, is there a second?
Second. Oh, I can't do that.
No, you can't.
I'm new.
Is there a second to this motion? Yes, all right, thank you, Counselor Snyder, sorry. She threw me off, and she was seconding her motion, you know?
Moving this along.
All right. Any questions? We'll go on to voting. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, we are on to item, actually, 12D. Deputy Mayor Pendleton, am I right?
Uh, 12D is a discussion item, proposed revisions to the town council rules and procedures- What I would like to do, if it's okay with all the counselors, is to gather everyone's input this evening, if they have any more questions or suggestions, add that to our list, and then the Rules Committee can meet once again prior to our September meeting and come back in September with everyone's suggestions put into place, if that's okay with the council.
I think that's good. I think I would just add that one of the concerns or questions I raised at the last meeting has been addressed in your recent draft, the idea of filling vacancies and making sure it's clearly stated in there about the two-week time period. So I think that was addressed, so thank you for that change. But I would agree, if everyone else does, that's a good game plan, that we review it and in September we'll do the final analysis. But Council McNeely?
If I could, if I could do this in some form or fashion, if we could start at one end of the counselors and move around?
Yeah.
So we can gather all their comments. And the clerk of the council could be very helpful in gathering information. And Counselor Snyder, I'm not sure if you have any comments to add to what I've just said.
I just want to give Council McNeely a chance. She's got one question before we do that.
I just want to understand what you want from us right now. Like, do you want me to tell you out loud what my changes or what my suggestions would be? Or do you want me to...
Yes, that's what I'm, that's what I'm going to ask each of the counselors as we go around the table, if they have any verbal that they would like to, for all of us to look at and then bring us your suggestions and we can keep track of that. And then we'll re-meet, the subcommittee can meet, and then we'll bring back the suggestions. So if we could start with Counselor, does everyone understand what I'm asking for?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. If we could start with Counselor Kabaski. Do you have any ideas or suggestions?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just two on the public input section on what is now...
Page number, please?
Page number five.
Thank you.
On the red line version. I think I would like to keep it at five minutes for the speakers, only because I know when folks get up there, it is a little nerve wracking. And I remember when I first started coming to these, it was nerve wracking to get up there and speak. I think the five minutes gives them a chance to get their thoughts together as they're speaking. And we've got, you know, if we've got a number of speakers, we still have, we still have A, where we're limiting it to 30 minutes unless extended by the mayor with the consent of the majority of the council. So I'd like to keep the speaker's time limit at five minutes. And the other, only other item I have is on page 19 on the vote for changing rules and procedures. I think I'd like to see that be two-thirds plus one, because I think what that does is changing the rules and procedures is a big deal. And I think if we go with two-thirds plus one, it kind of shows solidarity amongst the council. Those are the only two comments I had. Thank you.
Phil, can you just give me what that title is on page 19?
Thank you. Counselor Snyder, we'll go past you to Counselor McNeely.
I'm, I'm in favor of Mr. Kabaski's going to the five minutes. And I want to, I don't know what page it's on, but I want the adjournment. Where, where is the, oh, there is. Meeting adjournment should not be later than 11 o'clock unless, oh, page 17.
Page, please.
Page 17.
Counselor McNeely, pull your microphone closer and page number, please?
Page 17.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Page 17 adjournment. Yep?
Okay. Like where it says...
And your comment on that is?
Okay. By, it says, right now it says, member, meetings of the town council shall not be later than 11:00 PM unless this rule is waived by a unanimous vote of the council. That's not what we have right now, correct?
It is what we have.
No, because right now what we have is if somebody says meeting over, the meeting's over.
That's not unanimous.
It's another way of saying it. Another way of saying it.
Well, we don't get a, we're not voting on that. I, I think that's kind of rude. Like when, like say somebody's like trying to talk, it's 11:01, and they say, can we extend the meeting? Somebody, one person says no, then the person who's talking doesn't get a chance to finish their statement. I, I think, I think, I would like to see where person, you know, they, it has to be more than one person. Like if one person says no, it should not end the whole entire meeting. I don't think that's, I don't know how to put it, but, like, can we have, like, can we take a vote, extend the meeting, like say 15 minutes, and then take a vote on that? You know, a majority? To see if somebody wants to...
So we can look at that, to add that vote in there. We can talk about that. And I'm not sure if it's governed by Section 304 in the charter. So that's something we can look at.
Yeah. Well, I don't want, I don't want to open the charter or anything like that, but I just think...
If it is, we can't change it.
If, 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 if you can't, if you have to open the charter to change it, then leave it alone. But it just is very rude to be like talking in 11:01, somebody say, you know, be quiet and go home. I just don't like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
I got confused here. I thought we always did have the option of saying, well, we want to extend the meeting by 10 minutes and take a vote.
But no, no, as soon as somebody says you want to extend the meeting and some, and one person says no, think of Eddie Havens, remember?
Yeah.
Mary Jane Hockenberry? Mary Justine Hockenberry? If somebody, one person says no, meeting ends, we have to all be quiet.
You're right, you're right, you're right.
It's very rude.
Okay.
Budwehr does it differently. They, you know, they take a vote. I think that would be a nicer way to do it.
Okay. So we're going to look at that. Deputy Mayor Pendleton?
Yes, sir.
Committee? Okay.
And do you have any other suggestions, Mr. Mayor?
My main concern was that, and I think you've addressed already, that idea of making sure it's clear that, you know, a person is nominated at one meeting and two weeks later they're appointed. And I think you've already addressed that, so I'm fine. I think I would like to revisit the three-minute versus five minutes and have more discussion on that for individual speakers.
Okay.
And that, those are my, those are my two things.
Okay. Counselor Evans?
Thank you. Looking at page four, I think we might have addressed this last meeting, but it fills on there is the adoption of the agenda. I think we should keep that because it really just makes it a more clear flow to the meetings that we know how things are going to happen. Also on page five, where we talk about emails being read into the record unless otherwise brought forth by a council member.
No, I can't hear, I cannot hear anything you're saying. I'm sorry.
Emails being brought forth by a council member and emails not being read into the record. I would like to see that be reconsidered and potentially put something on our website where maybe people do submit them and have to select a specific box or something, a check mark, where they say they do want that read into record. I know the emails come in inconsistently, so we don't know if they come in and they want to be read into the record or if they want to be just heard by the council. So I would like, in my opinion, for them to be read and also to have a system in place where when they're submitting the email information, there's maybe a checkbox or something that says I want it to be. Five.
Page five, okay.
Oh, sorry. I'm between two drafts.
Oh. It's on page six in your pack.
Top of six. I'm looking between the last meetings and this meetings.
Okay.
And then the only other thing, which I brought up before, and I think that the committee has addressed it, but really that timeline of how the agenda is set, I just want the committee to make sure that it is within a time that really is workable for them. And it sounds like the committee has done that, but I know like with the clerk of the council, I think that's a really good input for you to have as far as like what those 48 hours versus the 90, I know someone here is 90-something hours.
I can't even read that.
I don't see it right now, but, just to make sure that when things are being put on the agenda, that that timeline is really workable versus holidays, weekends, work hours, just to make sure it's really a workable timeframe. And that's all I had.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor, Counselor Lopez?
Thank you. So I have a couple of questions, and I think it's just me not understanding, but on, and I have the draft, not the final draft. In the section where it says duties of the mayor...
What page?
Page two.
Do you have the page, please?
Page two. Section two.
Page two.
Yeah. C, the mayor shall be recognized as the official head of the town for all ceremonial and military purposes. Maybe I just need to understand, what's the definition of ceremonial? Do we have to define what ceremonial is?
That is written in our charter. That is the specific wording in our charter.
It says it in there, yeah.
All right. Can I call out the National Guard? Is that what the military means?
You could try.
Then my other question was regarding, on page four, section six, public meetings, B, about the executive session being considered confidential. Should we put something in there about what happens if a counselor is no longer a counselor? And does that continue to be confidential or are they free to talk about it in public?
That may need attorney input on that, and we'll have to check into that.
That's interesting question.
And then...
Thank you, Counselor Lopez.
And then my other suggestion is the same thing as, as it was mentioned before, about the five minutes.
I mean, yes.
Being able to, yes, meaning, maybe we need more than three.
Okay. Counselor Lydecker, is that all Counselor Lopez?
I'm sorry? Is that all Counselor Lopez?
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Lydecker?
Thank you. So on page, I think it's technically five, six, seven, and eight. Again, it's about the time limit of speaking. I don't understand why there's a difference between in-person versus virtual, that one gets three minutes and one gets five. I would prefer the five minutes for both. And as Counselor Evans also mentioned on page six, the fact that emails will not be read into the record, I thought that was very beneficial during the pandemic, and I don't think we should be moving backwards. Not all of us get these, the emails. When it says being brought forth by a counselor, not everybody knows to direct an email to one specific counselor for us to read it. I think people got used to it going to the town manager or through the general town council email. So I think it's a step backwards if we take that out and we don't read the emails that are being brought in, given the fact that, you know, this is a great way to communicate to us. So those would be my comments.
Thank you. Counselor King?
I'm good. I'm good.
Thank you, Counselor King. Counselor Snyder?
I have one more question. I am, just had two quick things. I made the notes on the bottom to just review. Oh, I agreed with the five minutes, so Deb, if you could just jot that down. And the last thing was, I know I'm rustling through this paper.
I'm taking notes also, so do you have another one, Counselor Snyder?
Um, just, I don't, it's real, let me just, you know, I'm being pressured.
We're going to...
No, I'm good.
Remember?
I'm good. That was it.
Okay. So does anyone, is everyone all set then with all of their suggestions being received?
Counselor Evans. Counselor Evans.
Okay. Counselor Evans, go ahead.
I have one more, just on page six, under B and C. So B talks about, in the lower half of the agenda, the setting of the agenda in the 48 hours or the 96 hours before the meeting. But then C says items of the agenda, of any meeting of the council may be submitted at the prior meeting of the council. Where was the one? Sorry, I'm between two drafts here. Wait. C, no? Okay.
C.
Okay. It has changed from the original one I was looking at. The original one had that any of those individuals could submit by the close of the business day, 4:30 on the day of the agenda meeting, but it looks like that was removed. Oh, that's D. Sorry, that's why I'm confused. So I'm just curious for that, why we have the agenda meeting, but then things can still be sent to be included on the agenda the day of the meeting. And then it's based on, and then even above, it's the mayor, the members, which I'm assuming is all of the council members.
Right.
Town manager, town attorney. So I thought that we had said we were going to make allowances for like official business that needed to be done on a timeline to be included, but not that all of these people could then add something the day of the meeting.
I don't understand where you're saying all of these people. Which number are you referring to?
The way I'm reading this is that there's the agenda meeting, which has to be held 96 hours prior.
Right.
Right.
Then D reads... Okay. Something is different between the two. The only exemption for this rule.
Yeah, you're right, D.
Additional items for the agenda may be made by the above persons, provided that all such additions be supplied to the clerk of the council by the close of business day, 4:30 on the day of the agenda meeting. I'm sorry. My misreading of the information. I was reading it as the day of the council meeting, so apologies.
Right. Not council meeting. Agenda meeting. Okay, that's fine. Agenda meeting.
Okay. Is everyone all good with their comments being received?
I think we're good.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and we'll go back and we'll meet and we'll redo our revisions and give you a correction.
Thank you. All right. Thank you all. Last, next item rather, is 13G, our legalization of marijuana in the state. And both Counselor Kabaski and I requested this. I'll defer to Counselor Kabaski to kick things off, then I'll make my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So back on July 1st, Mr. Maniscalco sent us a write-up on SB 1201 regarding the legalization of recreational cannabis in the state. I was surprised to see some towns like Enfield immediately move to ban the sale, and I see that tonight I saw in the paper, East Hartford is considering the same thing. What I'd like to see us do is possibly put a temporary moratorium on opening any of these businesses until we can work through, there's a number of different items in here. We can work through and get an understanding of what it would mean to the town going forward because I'm, I'm not for opening up a shop, I'm not necessarily for banning one. I think I'd like to have a better understanding before I can sit back and say, this is what I feel. So I'd just like to, as we move forward, just kind of go through and see, is this something that we want to do? How would we meet the guidelines that are in the Act SB 1201? And is this something we would be interested in? Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Kabaski. And I will just add my comments to that discussion. I think it's a good idea for us to kind of analyze this a little more, and I'm concerned about if we should decide to allow a shop to open, we should have our own town regulations, like they can't be set up near schools or near religious institutions or hospitals or doctors' offices. I mean, how do we want to have this configured? And I think it's important for us to have that discussion before we just say, okay, it's legal now, let's let planning and zoning just approve whatever, whoever comes in to open a shop, you know? I think we should set those standards, whatever they're going to be. So I'm happy to have that discussion. I'm assuming we're going to get a little more information from the state, and then maybe at our first meeting in September, we can have that discussion. Mr. Maniscalco?
Yeah. So I'm sure we'll get some more information from the state that we could certainly get to all of you. I think the question I fight with in my head is where is, and I think this is probably
I'm assuming we're going to get a little more information from the state, and then maybe at our first meeting in September, we can have that discussion. Mr. Maniscalco?
Yeah, so I'm sure we'll get some more information from the state.
Yeah.
That we could certainly get to all of you. I, I think the question I fight with in my head is, where is, and I think this is probably going to have to be a conversation with the town attorney, but where is your responsibility versus the Planning and Zoning Commission's responsibility?
Right.
And whether the Planning and Zoning Commission should really be putting those sorts of requirements into their regulations?
Right.
And maybe they are the ones that would implement that moratorium, rather than the legislative body of the council, so that's kind of my internal questions I'm thinking about.
Yeah.
So I, I don't know, but we've got plenty of time till your next meeting to kind of figure that out, so.
You know, and the sale's really not going to start till 2022, but...
Correct.
And as Counsel Kavaski pointed out, I mean, Enfield went ahead, the town council, they didn't rely on the Planning and Zoning Commission, they said, we're stopping it, that's it, we're banning them. So they, they kind of took it on themselves, rather than to deal with planning and zoning and say, what regulations do you want to set up? So it's, it's just a mixture of everything right now, because nobody really knows what those guidelines are.
I would just be cautious comparing yourselves to other communities, because sometimes those roles are different in every community, too.
Okay, yeah.
And then additionally, I, I would also point out that we do have a medical dispensary in town, so we don't want to impact them in a negative way either.
We do, right, yeah.
You know, we'll have to kind of thread the needle a little bit.
All right, Counsel King?
I agree, I thank you, Counselor, and Mr. Mayor for bringing that up. I, I didn't even really consider that. The fact that we want to talk this through for B is for other reasons, to make sure that even in the town of South Windsor, that if we do decide to move forward, that's equitable. I think that's one of the biggest things in regards to marijuana dispensaries, so on and so forth, is that some people have the wealth and the means to do it, and some don't, and how does that play into where we put up these dispensaries, if that is the case? So I'm, I'm thankful that you guys suggested that, because even those suggestions can be made, if that is indeed the case, to the Planning and Zoning Committee, to make sure that that is part of their thought process as well, that, okay, you know what, just because you have the means and the resources to do it, doesn't mean that it should still be allowed.[1669.24]